Okay, all right. Bein' seven o'clock, I will open our April third, two thousand and nineteen planning board meeting. Um, we... The table cleaner is on?
Oh, sorry.
That's usually Moss's job.
Yep.
It's funny how it just defaults in that direction.
Sorry, I got it.
Um, so we have some bills, we have payroll, we have, um, Jane's payroll for, um, the week ending for five, two thousand and nineteen for nine hundred and twenty, twenty-six. We have, um, another one of, um, Jane's payroll from for the weekend and for twelve for seven eighty-five, eighty-four. I'm just adding this up. And we have week ending for nineteen, two thousand and nineteen for eight hundred and twenty-seven, twenty. Do I have...
Make a motion to accept those bills?
Second. On paper.
All right.
And we have a couple of bills. We have one here from the land law books. Do we get these hard copies still? Do they have like an online version or something that we should consider getting, or?
Uh, is that for March book, or is that, uh?
No, that's...
Land law specialty publisher?
Yeah, I, we got them, so I'm paying for it, but Bill said we really don't need to receive it in the future.
I don't think anybody really reads them around here.
But because we were getting it, I have to pay for it.
Just fill it, okay.
But then I just, I sent him a letter saying, yeah, thank you.
And you can't, okay. So, yeah, I don't think that we ever, I mean, everything's online and, um...
Okay.
We have, uh, bills from Sti...
This is not working, is it?
It's, that's a two, three, five. We have a bill for Staples.
Oh, okay.
I don't want, yes. For fifty, twenty-seven.
All right, there we go.
We have another bill for Staples for fifty-seven, sixty-four, and one from Pitney goes for one fourteen, seventy-five.
That worked.
And we have, um, payroll, actually a petty, a postage, um, in the amount of one thirty-seven, seventy-one. Um, do I have a motion to...
So...
...the dollars?
Second.
On paper.
All right.
We do have some mail, by the way. Uh, I don't know if it's in there or not, but we got the, uh, write-off refusal application, uh, for Rory Gunter, uh, to pull five lots out of chapter sixty-one and seven and then sell them to interested buyers. So I don't know whether he wanted to schedule a time to talk about that application. It's forwarded to the planning board and a number of other boards intent on for comment back through the board selection. So if you want, we can talk about it at the, uh, the next meeting. Uh, if you, see if you have any comments or, um, suggestions for the board.
Can you just send what you want to the board? So do you wanna hear, we'll, we'll hear the, the sixty-one release for the rental properties, we'll put it on the...
What? It was cleared, no.
Cause we do need to have a, a hea- a public hearing on that, right?
I don't think it's a public hearing, but I think, um, because the court will have a hearing.
Sorry.
Just out of reach?
But they sent it to the planning board, the consternation for comments.
I know, we just provided whether we failed that day.
Yes, where do you think the county should pursue, buying the site or, um, just to let it go?
Yeah, I think we've always, that's, we can put it on the next agenda, it shouldn't take too many...
Just talk about it.
That. Um, I, what else we have, so we have... You should have looked at this a little earlier. Does anybody...
Yes, write-off, please. I'm sorry.
What, that, did I think, that pack with all the zoning stuff? Did you go through that? I just had, I don't, I don't wanna be reading that all by...
Um... Yeah, so the, uh, the library is applying for, um, an internally lit sign for the message board that they want cut out. They need a variance for that, so there's, made of the application to the planning board of appeals.
Do we have pictures of that sign? Is it, is it...
There are some, um, sketches of that.
White fluorescent, is it tasteful, or is it just a TV?
Broke legs.
Yeah, it'd be nice to know what it is.
Um...
Maybe get something that, I mean, it does have a historic district and, and...
I was a little worried about that. People say it's, it's a little bit, um, classy, classy.
So there's some, some, uh, pictures here. I can read from the application if you'd like to explain what they're asking for. So we're seeking to erect an internally illuminated sign message board to replace the existing changeable message sign.
For the library.
So that, um, um, lighting of a sign may only be via white light of reasonable intensity, shielded and, uh, directed solely at the sign. Internally illuminated signs are permitted, um, on lots owned for business and industrial uses directly but in group twinning. So that's the existing zoning bylaw.
Yeah.
So it's not permitted in the village district. So that's what they are...
I know that they were trying to explain at like town meeting and meetings about what, you know, to make, cause I guess it was dangerous for people, things are falling on people's heads and stuff. Um, but it is, I mean, our, this is our downtown, you know, other towns have, you know, di- different, but this is...
This is our country square.
This is it, right?
You know, it's a historic country square, and I don't know if we want it to look like Auburn.
Right, we don't...
No offense, but I mean, it's...
But on the flip side of that, I mean, it's really nice that if you drive through to be alerted to voting times, days, to be alerted to dog lies. I mean, little things like that they put up there, different programs that they have, and that way it can switch out.
No, I, I...
Yep.
And I mean, it is the country square, but I mean, it's not, right.
We don't have much of this town, this is what we have, so we really need to pay attention to what's going on, but...
Exactly. Right.
So if you have any comments to the UGA, certainly welcome to, uh, the library, but...
We'll do a comment, do you choose a pretty sign? Like...
We could, uh, provide that to you if you have to think about it.
Yes.
I know, I'm...
Yeah, they could, yeah.
I'm surprised they can't up, right, update the one, like, repair it, fix it. But I, and I know, because it was explained that you can now change things by computer internally, and it's, it's the high tech.
Yes.
Well, we have one in front of the town hall right now.
That little one.
And sometimes it's cheaper to buy new than it is to repair old, cause the parts and stuff.
And we, and we have, you know, we have comments from the public that say that we don't update people, um, that we don't, you know, we, the, the social media account that no one ever uses and that kinda stuff. So I, I, I can see, um, um, in, you know, the town did vote to...
Absolutely.
They voted to spend the money, but they didn't vote to, to have illuminated sign, that was a different sign.
I...
Okay, and according to this, they have to go to the ZBA to get, um, an appeal, to get a variance.
So, so I, so I guess if anybody has an issue who's, who's watching our videos, they should, I guess they'd go to that ZBA meeting and... Of course, I didn't even, what, what date is that?
It's not, they have to apply for it, yeah.
They have, that is their petition.
Oh, they have?
So is there a date of hearing already?
Yeah, petition.
Um, they should go to that meeting and make their, make their, um, voices heard.
Yeah, April ninth, I think it is. Next Tuesday, I think.
Sir, is there any guidance on the master plan the guys went through ten years ago that, uh, would do any signs in the, in the village district?
I think they said we needed more signs.
Yes.
Um, I have to go back to, I honestly don't remember, it's a decade ago, so it's more than, I can't remember, but I, I know that everybody wanted the downtown stuff to be in taste. That's why when they did the Dunkin' Donuts down there, it was very important that it was designed with a nice windows and base, and has that look. And they actually did a very good job of making it look, um, like it wasn't, it was, um...
That whole building did a really nice job, being the, of what they did when they were down there, Charlton Optical did too, it's, they're all playing very nicely down there.
What's that?
No, right. I thought we finished, we're proud of our town.
Absolutely.
I didn't see the...
We'll get back to that, I don't know.
I will, uh, perhaps Jane or whoever, either Jane or I, will send you that file so that you can, if you have any comments, or we can pass it on to the media.
There is a motion, we have, we have a seven oh five.
It's other than...
Okay, we'll come back.
We'll come back and we'll talk, talk whatever is left. Um, we have a continued public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, we have open forum, does anybody have any questions?
Pictures of the sign?
That was our open forum right there, there it is. Um, we have a continued public hearing for ZPT Energy Solutions, um, LLC, Masonic Woods Way, definitive subdivision plan, um, the one that's off Burlingame Road.
So I got a call today from Adam Christie from ZPT. Um, at the last meeting, we required them to write a letter from the overlook, agreeing to be...
Then we'll see if ZPT can sign in.
To, uh, to the application for the development, for the, uh, subdivi- definitive subdivision plan, and he was not able to get that letter to us today. So we've asked for a continuance.
Good.
Here is the letter, passing for...
Dear Mr. Scanlon, ZPT Energy Solutions LLC respectfully request an extension of time on the definitive subdivision application for Masonic Woods Way, in which to have a public hearing and take final action beyond the ninety day period and to allow for the planning board to file their certificate of action for the town clerk by April twenty-second, two thousand and nineteen. The application is for the definitive subdivision plan entitled Masonic Woods Way dated November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen for property located off Masonic Home Road and Burlingame Road, owned by Masonic Home Inc. The plan was submitted to the planning department on November twentieth, two thousand and eighteen and was accepted as submitted by the planning board on November twenty-eighth, two thousand and eighteen. Thank you, Adam Christie, VP of Engineering and Development for Pro-Tech Energy Solutions. So do we wanna vote to continue?
Oh.
I'm gonna motion to vote to continue the public hearing, do we?
I hope, hope, for what date this, how's the seventeenth, look?
Well, this letter is giving, asking for the extension to November twenties, uh, April twenty-second.
April twenty-second is not...
So we're gonna have to go on May?
So that means you only have to do it, you have to do it at the next meeting, which is the seventeenth.
April seventeen.
What do we have on, do we have the agenda here?
It's really intended to be a very strict...
Yeah, I get, I'm just...
Yeah, that's fine. If we got room on the seventeenth?
Yeah, we can, I think we can do it, I...
And here it is requested to April twenty-second.
Really only...
That's the extension.
They have for filing the decision which counts on that.
Oh, oh, they, yeah, they're sending the filing, the decision, so we need to hear it before that. Um, that's what I was saying to you earlier.
I interrupted your motion.
No problem.
So, yeah, I mean, the, the, the big thing is we don't know how long it'll take to get through all the warrant article, but if it's, if it's gonna be as quick as we, there's only a few little open items on that, correct?
Correct, right.
Um, we put it up front and we, um, we take a look at it. How, the, the, the Charlton Optical shouldn't be a huge, Charlton Optical shouldn't be a huge belong...
Uh, we'll talk about that tonight, uh, so whatever issues that left over from tonight should be fairly quick, um...
Just trying to so, well, the, I mean, I guess we don't have much of an option to do it more than the seventeenth, or we don't...
Nope. I think that's something you can just put it in.
We should just hold on there.
So do we have a motion to continue, um, uh, ZPT Energy Solutions to April seventeenth?
Yes.
Second.
On paper?
All right.
I mean, just about seven fifteen, um, we have Charlton Optical Site Plan Amendment, the public hearing, um, from Masonic Home Road. Is it, oh, we're opening the public hearing, so do we have...
Yes.
Yeah.
Do you have that or what?
Yeah.
In accordance with section two hundred dash seven point one and two hundred dash seven point two of the Charlton zoning bylaw, the Charlton Planning Board will have a public hearing on Wednesday, April third, two thousand and nineteen at seven fifteen in the planning board office, um, on the application of Peter Mally, Mally, one oh nine dash six Masonic Home Road, Charlton Mass, oh one five oh seven for site plan approval to construct a five hundred and sixteen square foot addition to the existing one thousand one hundred and sixty-one square foot building. The expansion will provide the tenant, Charlton Optical, with additional space for its services. The property is located in Charlton Center at one oh nine dash point, dash six Masonic Home Road, and the lot has additional frontage along North Main Street. The property ID is assessors map thirty-five, block A, parcel eleven in the zone Village.
Good evening, my name is David Feist with the floor engineering, but besides also Peter Mally, I'm the owner of Charlton Optical. Um, and I, no, if I, it's a small site, so I can either leave this on the table or put it up on the stand, whichever's easier.
Um, do we have...
Yeah, because of...
Okay.
Yep. Um, just a little bit, it's a fairly small project. Um, Charlton Optical is located here on the corner of Masonic Home Road, um, in the existing building. I'd like to add basically another five, a small five hundred and eighteen square foot addition in this area here, and there's an existing sidewalk here and a, you know, small landscape area this side. Um, in order to offset the increased impervious area, we're proposing to dress up the corner a little more, um, with some additional landscaping, um, to offset so that basically there'll be no increased impervious area in the side. Um, we're also, there's no real striping over there currently, so part of the project will be a restrike parking lot. Um, in addition, um, to connect, he's already connected to town water. Um, there's an existing sewer stub, um, on the property, but he wasn't connected in the past. Part of the project, this will be connected to town sewer as well. Um, with that, we had a sort of landscape plan, you know, put together, um, to show some of the proposed plantings. And the existing sign is now located down here on the side, and the new sign location is proposed up on the corner. Um, we did receive some comments from Graves Engineering today, and mostly all look fairly reasonable and stuff that we'd be able to address, um, before the next meeting. Um, one of the main things, uh, important parts of the project is it does require a variance, um, from the front yard setback in order, cause the new, there's a ten foot front yard setback. Proposed corner of the building will be approximately five and a half feet off the property line. Um, we met earlier, um, with, you know, both Scanlon and Kurt Meskis to talk about, so we're also, the applicant has filed a variance application with the ZBA and also a, a special permit for the continuance of an existing non-conforming lot. Um, and with that, that hearing will be next week at April ninth. And so with that, I've opened up any questions you might have. This one right here?
Yes.
Yes, that should remain as...
Yes, correct, yeah.
Can we move that down for a second, so we, it's so...
I know, it's...
What do we have on that?
Yep. Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, one right there.
Yep.
And this is...
They all, okay. All much better.
That's what I was...
Oh, so then this is just the elevation view of what, um, what the expansion would be like.
So the building would be right up against the sidewalk at that point?
Um, there'll still be a small landscape strip, about four or five feet between, between the sidewalk and the... And I believe it's a right, it's just an expansion for an existing office space and exam room?
Yes, more of an exam room and waiting area and office space, so that whole area of five hundred square feet will be broken up into three different, uh, three different rooms. Uh, basically, there's, what we're really needed for is there's some insurances, plans that we wanna get on, and we can't because we just don't have enough room for equipment. Um, we wanna do like some, uh, like retinal imaging, that sort of thing, so we wanna take like the next level, uh, level, not just like a, um, uh, refraction type thing, we wanna do it more of an exam of the eye, you know, so we can do some, uh, retinal pictures, that sort of thing, so, so, you know, we just don't have the room for that equipment right now. It's just too, too tight, so...
So the setback would be moving to five, is it five feet?
Yeah.
Five and a half.
Five and a half.
Eleven and a half feet? And once you're meeting with the ZBA, just take two seconds.
Uh, next Tuesday.
There are a couple of comments that you mentioned in, in Mike's letter, uh, that you probably need to, to address. Uh, number three says that, um, the project is within the historic district, and that room is within historic commission for approval.
Okay, that's a separate, okay.
So if the planning board approves the project, that could be a condition, or you can apply that to have it surged, but I think that's a condition of approval, that, that would be fine. Uh, number four, I, I thought was, uh, significant, it says, "Forshaw note that stack or canteen parking is proposed on the north side of the building for employees. Graves understands that this area may already be used in this fashion and that proposed plan would add signage to define use. Should also be noted that these parking spaces need to back not to Main Street to exit." Can you talk about that?
Yeah, I mean, basically this is this sort of small area behind the building, so I think years ago, originally I had a post office.
It was a post office, yeah, that's where the trucks used to drive in and drop off and... Yeah, so right now, right now, I think like even the employees park there now, I mean, we can even fit, I think some of the drawing that you have, we can fit more cars that were there. Um, and so, um, that's where all the employees park right now, so, you know, anywhere from four to six vehicles can probably park there for employees, which there's never that many there at, at town square, sorry.
And yeah, so, so you would have to back, although I know that, you know, there's, the site distance, it's set back, you know, from the intersection a little bit. It's been that, that way for a number of years, so...
They back in, or they pull out?
So that'd be signed for employees only?
Yes, yep. And also, um, the other thing to note also, I know the existing dumpster's not enclosed, so part of that, I know Graves just requesting that, uh, six foot fence be placed around the, the dumpster.
That's, um, kind of seven.
Yep.
Do we have any more concerns about the, the parking? I, I mean, sometimes Main Street gets, um, pretty busy the few times a day whenever, you know, the change of commu-, you know, three block buses, but in general...
They'll go down, it's Masonic Home Road, most of them. They're coming from the school, every time I see them, I'll go down to Masonic Home Road.
Yeah. Right. Yeah, yeah, I agree, so...
It should be...
I don't prefer Main Street.
Cause that's actually North Main Street, and there's not that much traffic there.
Right.
Unless the post office has a rusher sale.
Funny, there is a lot more traffic on the roads now, but it was hard, like, when I first opened up, that, you know, before that, there used to be a post office, and cars are going in and out of there constantly. And then when I opened up, you had the bank, which was across the street, and you had the pharmacy, and then my traffic, so, you know, is it an increased traffic through there? It's not, you know, and I don't think the plaza is as exciting as it used to be either, you know?
Always, always the safety piece, right, is just working, and I just don't think there's, there's that big of an issue. Even if you, even if you didn't back, even if you had a backhoe, I don't see that as immediate.
Do you approve the sidewalk, by the side of the...
Under which side? Um, there's no proposal to do that now, and we're hoping that basically the project won't disturb that, and that's also up here to entail right away.
Where does the sidewalk go, how far up does it go?
Well, it's a, it's a dead end after my store.
After your store.
There's nothing, so like, there's nothing. They used to go, did it go all the way to post office at one time? They don't know yet, I, I, I think it did at one time, but then the, when the phone company did some decaving, that got eliminated, so there's, as soon as my sidewalk, my property ends, there's no sidewalk.
Yeah, where the sidewalk ends, there's a whole book about it.
What kind of condition is that sidewalk in today?
Um, that, I don't know, I mean, that's something we'd have to look at, we could take some pictures.
Does it need to be fixed, that sidewalk, or is it in good shape today?
It's okay, it's okay.
I think most of the sidewalks need to be fixed down there.
Yeah. It's better than the rest of the sidewalks in the center of Main Street, but it's, it's okay.
So, we recently had a sidewalk study done, how does that fit in with the sidewalk?
Well, the plan is to reset sidewalks all the way down North Main.
Sure, okay, but there was no work that was gonna be done on that corner that, that it may disrupt or...
Well, you know, the, the flag is to make the village area very pedestrian friendly. So it's to add in gaps where there are no, fill in gaps where there are no sidewalks and extend it significantly beyond what exists today.
Okay. Yeah. Probably down to...
Probably bike lanes too, right, probably some sort of a bike lane or something, cause that's the new trend of...
Yes.
Yes.
Right.
But that's been the plan for the last ten years, and that still hasn't happened, so I'd rather see an existing business expand.
Well, the, the thing now is...
Yes, I, I agree, yes.
That's in the complete streets plan, that, see what I can see compared to before the planning board. And there's complete streets funding complement that, so, but kind of pretty fat to apply the money to, you know, put sidewalks in the village.
Oh, okay. We should, we should make sure that we don't miss the grant deadlines for that, we should pay attention.
Um, do, do others need to be notified, or have they been notified?
I think they already have the letters of advice on that.
Yes.
So others say, oh, yeah.
Mostly the brothers are businesses, aren't they?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It'd be good to say, bro, and get that service in there, I have to make a guess.
And it will, I mean, with the historic, um, commission involved, it'll look not, I mean, they'll...
Yeah, whatever needs to be done, yeah.
They'll say nice windows and, you know, give it a villagey look and...
Now, is there anybody specific to contact in town for the historic commission?
I can look, yeah.
Oh.
You are bringing services from North Main Street into the side of that area?
Um, they're actually existing already, a sewer stub is done back here. It just was never connected to the existing structure.
Is that on the way, or...
Slabbing there.
So there's really, there's really not that many comments at all?
There is a, a letter from the building contractor, we're up to...
Kurt, do you wanna, do you wanna talk, do you wanna comment, or do you want me to read your letter for you?
Uh, I'll give you the Cliff Notes version.
I'd love that.
Of that, the property is shown, yeah, we talked about that. It's in the village district, it's a ten thousand square foot required zone, the property lacks that. The property is a pre-existing non-conforming parcel, um, proposes this twelve foot addition, a fence a setback of ten, of ten feet by approximately four point five feet. So I must point out to the planning board, the applicant, uh, the proposed addition will need a variance and a special permit from the zoning board of appeals along with planning board site plan, you know, and we know that they've, uh, applied, notices have gone out for it. You know, and it's, and the applicant is well aware that his, you know, special permit is needed because it is an undersized lot, and they are offending the setbacks. I will just, because Mike commented in his, um, letter today, unrecognised by myself and Bill is a provision that says the planning board, um, in the village district through the special permitting process can offend the set, allow offense of the setback. Um, however, the lot is still a pre-existing non-conformity and would have to go to the zoning board of appeals anyway.
Hmm. So... Additional questions, do we have any questions from...
So we want open open forum, open up here.
Yeah, we, yeah, that's...
Everybody's here doing it.
Yeah. Do we have any questions from the public?
Uh, the public tonight.
Um, so...
So it's, so there's some things that they need to get done before we can, we can really take action on it.
Yeah. Yeah.
So we'll, so they'll need, I'll step back to you.
They need to go to ZBA.
They'll need to go to talk to the historic commission and get their, and get their seal of approval. Um, I've never heard anything, um, really tough, like, I heard that they're very fair, so it should be, the windows and maybe the shape of a, of the, you know, to me...
Yes. The nature of the sign.
They wanna, they wanna just fit nice and, you know, they don't like long, the dark signs, like, no, no blinking.
Yes. Near neon.
I feel the notice, are, are there gonna be any windows along Main Street, or is that all of... Big, well, okay, so there's gonna be some small windows that...
The front of the building's not gonna change.
Yeah.
No.
Time change, oh...
That's decided to go in this thing. The front of the go is a time, it's a sign.
So they'll probably say, they'll probably say put grills in, right, and use, I mean, it's a brick building now, and brick is historic, is, is a historical thing, it's not got any...
Right, no, not at all.
That must be the plan, Peter, right?
Right, right.
Or, or clapboard, you know, which is historic.
Right, just to maintain some that's gonna match either, you know, go with bricks, it's kinda tough to match older brick with, with, with something that's newer. I imagine, you know, we'd get that as close as we can. One of the reasons, one of the, the reasons with the windows that we, we put them up so high is one of those areas are gonna be an exam room. And the sidewalk is five feet away, we don't want people looking in, that sort of thing, so that was one of the reasons why they, uh, they were up there. You know, I was even thinking like, you know, taller bushes like where you'd in between, just to dress that whole area up. I'm all for that area being all, you know, dressed up, keep it historic, um, you know?
And they're, they're fair.
And ma- maintain it, I mean, you know?
Would you new canopy looks great, yes.
Yeah, it does, little things like that, I wish others would do, but it's, it's good. Thank you, Doc.
We know everybody's gonna be involved in the next master plan, and they're all gonna get into it and want it to be beautiful down there, so...
I wish, and so, it's a big old task.
So we have, so we have, they need to, historic, they have to go through, I mean...
Yeah, look for the ZBA.
ZBA, that's something, I mean, you said next Tuesday, um, so there's not many other, I mean, obviously the Graves comments need to be addressed, and that's open, um, do we...
Do we plan on basically after we get through those meetings, just in case there's any other changes, we just make one round revisions and there's...
Do you think everything will be through for April seventeenth? Would you, is that too soon, or do you wanna, it's...
Not sure, the historical commission's the only one that I don't know about, so, it would all depend a little bit, you know, if it could.
If we could, I think, first meeting in May would be better because we have a business agenda, so...
May.
Right, right.
As soon as it better, that's, yeah, sooner the better first, right?
Yeah, soon as...
So, so we'll do first, first meeting in the first Wednesday in May, May first, the...
May first. I'll make a motion, we continue it to May first.
Second.
On paper?
All right. Right.
Don't make him enough time to see the historical.
Yeah, we don't know how often May or anything, so.
I'm hoping by that time he'll come back and approve it then.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. We have the solar accessory battery discussion on solar site plans, including arrays off Hookfield Road, Griffin Road, and Carpenter Hill Road. The building commissioner and fire department captain may attend, along with applicants for the solar arrays. Um, we have the fire and apartment letter, but we have any?
So.
Well, do it.
Madam Chair, just so that you know, this is Captain Dennis Carlson, he's been a member of the department for a number of years. Um, we had a fire inspector, and he was making great gowns for us, um, due to some medical reasons, he left us. We were in between, and Captain Carlson has been promoted to the newly renamed commission of community risk reduction, because we do just more than, he does just more than, um, fire inspections. So he coordinates, uh, fire inspections, but also arson investigation, and is doing what, you know, I'm, I'm mentoring him in what I've been doing for the department for a number of years, which is interfacing with this board, so. Captain Carlson, Patsy, Gee, Don, Alisia, John, and Bill Scanlon.
Welcome.
Thanks for having me.
So Larry, do you wanna come up and just chat? You're welcome to have a cheer.
Yeah, you get that nice chair, then.
If you have questions, we can go over the letter line by line, whatever you would like.
Well, maybe you could talk about the, the field trip that you took and what you saw, and how that resulted in the.
We did, we traveled, um, we've been researching for, seems like eternity now, um, but we did take a little trip to a couple of solar fields last week, and we went to Athol. Saw a considerable field, and then went to Winchendon for the second one, which I think was a little more closer to what, uh, we're seeing here with the applications. Um, very informative, the crew and the team that brought us through the properties, very forthcoming with information, uh, it's a new technology within, uh, public safety. So there's not much information right now on it, so what we did was we worked with, uh, the building commissioner and the fire department, and we did communicate with the, with several of the fire departments in the area that had these in place already, and what their recommendations were, uh, and we came up with this form, uh, and these requirements, uh, as the initial proposal, the initial, uh, concepts and ideas that we have. We believe they're fair, we believe they're, um, in the best interest of public safety and, and the community, so.
Just for the audience, I know you carried this sort of, uh, through some of the things that you.
Certainly. Um, this is strictly for the, um, battery storage systems that have been addressed and proposed at this point. There's nothing in the zoning bylaw that specifically regulates it, so what we came up with was a hundred-foot minimum from any property, property line, a hundred-foot minimum from any critical equipment, excluding the, uh, battery storage systems themselves, um.
What type of critical equipment are you referring to there?
It, it's pretty general, um, the facilities we saw, there was nothing within a hundred feet but transformers large, you know, cluster transformers electric, uh, things like that. Um, a hundred feet from any structure. We came up with a, with a stipulation on that, unless approved separation wall is established or in place, um, either natural or artificial, um, we would have to see and agree with that beforehand. Um, a five-foot minimum concrete pad or crushed stone surface surrounding, uh, the entire container, uh, and not more than twelve inches from the lowest portion of the container. Uh, the ones we did visit, one of them had a four or five-step, um, staircase to get in the ends of the containers. And that's something that we're not interested in, we wanna be able to take one step, get in, um, with the gear we're gonna be having, the potential for, uh, significant weather and, and, um, snow, humidity, ice cream lotion. We don't wanna have to deal with any steps or, or significant, um, elevation changes. Fifteen-foot minimum distance between any other portion of the storage system, the ones we visited, uh, they already had that in place, there was plenty of room to maneuver, in and around the equipment with a hose line or whatever the case may be, we can talk about that afterwards as well. An eight-foot chain link or security fence around the entire array, or around the standalone equipment of the battery storage system themselves. This is strictly for aesthetics and critical. The array is, um, concerning enough visually to the public, but we don't want these big, huge boxes, um, we don't want people driving by and seeing, and getting all concerned with that. Emergency access boxes secured on the site away from the container, so that we will have access to any locks and or, um, gates on the properties, we have access twenty-four hours a day. We're gonna require contact information on-site as well, uh, within that EAS or on an applicable sign, uh, located a distance away from the array, so that we can get a responsible party on the phone within a reasonable timeframe, and somebody that can answer any question they have within a reasonable timeframe. There's stipulations about response times as well, if they're required to respond to the array. It's, obviously, it's their equipment, they're gonna wanna get people, uh, out there as soon as possible if there is some sort of failure or emergency. Two three-ring binders and one electronic PDF of the plans, uh, with specific equipment specifications, cut sheets, reference materials and such, um, sixty days prior, uh, to the hearing, so that we can have enough time to look at the process and see what the changes may be, um.
Is that gonna be possible?
To do what?
The sixty days before, because they're working with you, how, about how far before they would submit their site plan?
Yeah, uh, which one are you referring to?
The one you've been talking about, the, the, the submitted minimum of sixty days before the site plan, maybe.
That just goes down, right?
Note eight.
It's for any change to the site plan that might. You're trying to go, yeah.
So, just.
Well, you know, it's, it could be a burden for some of them, but, I, that's what the fire department, maybe.
Well, I want the fire department to have what they, what they need, so you just need to be very clear to make sure that this was well known, that.
Right, that's, that's what they need, and. Right. So that by the time they file their site plan review, the fire department would have reviewed and authorized, the systems have to make it, you know, easier for the planning board.
And much more helpful, right?
Right.
Uh, system test data, uh, to assure in, uh, accordance with UO listings, uh, seventeen forty-one, nineteen seventy-three, and ninety-five forty. Operation and maintenance plan, including disposal of damaged batteries post-event, um, that's a significant hazards materials issue. The batteries, once they do, and if were, I should, if they do fail, um, present a serious hazards materials issue.
Don't they, they also wear out over time, just aroma, you start.
They do, it's, the industry says about a ten-year lifespan on the batteries right now.
So would you want to see what they're going to do with those, spent batteries, and what they're gonna.
That natural end of life? Or, or, is that, I mean.
That's, that's part of maintenance, and the maintenance plan is gonna say, we're gonna change these batteries at ten years.
Part of the maintenance plan.
And that they were.
Yeah, and then under the disposal, uh, of damage, uh, in the maintenance plan.
Okay.
Are you, will you, you will review the maintenance plan, the operation and maintenance plan, the, um, because I don't think we'll be qualified to review the operation and maintenance plan, cause that's something that,
Certainly.
I mean, we can look at it, but are, obviously, we're not, uh, professionals with that kinda stuff.
And nor am I, and I would use all the, uh, the resources of individual companies, whoever's, I'd work with them and go over it. Installation of a clean agent extinguishing system, and this is where I can talk about the extinguishment of potential hazard. Right now, the container has come with about a ten-minute clean agent suppression system, uh, it realizes there's an issue, it discharges the agent. The best thing for that is to not open the box or the container, so that the suppression agent does its job and continues to extinguish. Industry standards say it's about a thirty-minute actual use, as opposed to just the ten minutes with an enclosed container. If there is a failure and some of the agent, um, escapes, or some sort of failure occurs and cleaner comes in, it obviously reduces that. But the industry standard for extinguishment is to let this burn, it's not to, to try to extinguish, cause it's, with the potential and stored energy, it's just gonna keep igniting and keep igniting if this thermal runaway is reached. Water is the preferred extinguishing agent for these, surprisingly enough, goes against everything we've ever learned with electricity, um, but copious amounts of water is the preferred extinguishing agent. And in this town, we lack copious, copious amounts of water. Um, we discussed possibilities and requirements for, um, water storage facilities, but it's just, it's not feasible and practical, uh, for these facilities. So, our approach is going to be, if it's far enough away from any potential extensions or life hazard, we're gonna let these things, unfortunately, we're gonna let them burn. It's not appealing to the public to have that happen, but life safety is, is our concern, and we're not gonna jeopardize our individuals' lives.
And it's gonna be on a closed container burning, right?
It is, and that container will fail eventually, um, we saw, one was a concrete container with metal doors, which is fantastic, but the metal will eventually fail with enough heat, and the other one we saw was just like a regular metal Conex box. And those will fail, um, with these batteries, if they do get into that thermal alley, they're gonna fail relatively soon, so. Um, and then, the last one we had was updates to be above, um, annually, or ninety days prior to any changes made or components made to the system, we just want, uh, as much notification as we can, so that we're not surprised.
Question on the fire, if the idea is to let it burn itself out and eventually the systems will fail, would it not make good sense to, I mean, require trenching, um, right af- after the chain link fence? So that way, if there is a fire, at least there's the trench that should contain it as opposed to letting it flow out?
It, it, it won't, nothing's gonna flow out, there won't be, um, a discharge or a, they'll have a little bit of plastic in the case, but there won't be this mass.
Okay.
Lead ion, it's, I mean, these lithium ions are, they're not the, the lead acid that have.
Okay.
And they're just gonna, and there's enough buffers in our, in our requirements for these areas already, that there, it's not gonna extend to anything, any new areas. And it's a very safe technology, this is all precautionary, it's, these companies that are doing it certainly are, are on top of things, they've been more than helpful throughout the process.
Right. Thank you.
But this is fairly new, right?
To this region, Europe's been doing it for years and years, obviously, they're ahead of us in a lot of these concepts, uh, California's been doing it for years, uh, New York's, uh, a few years ahead of us, but this is, it's booming here in central Mass now, it's, it's popping up everywhere. So the hundred, hundred feet from critical equipment, so I, does that include the, the, um, the rectifiers and things like that, I don't know, Ernie, is that?
Yeah, I, I, that's, I'm here that, that's the same question, uh, as well, so I'm, I'm looking at this.
Cause I, I would think that who wouldn't want that placed near the other, the rectifying equipment, the transformers and distribution equipment?
The way we had planned it to design it, we had basically two pads that are fairly close to each other, with the inverters and the switchgear and that type of stuff, the standard stuff that comes with all arrays and the battery. It's all more or less one system that, that works together, so, when you think of an auxiliary storage for an array, you know, the way we had it designed, the way we were planning to do it, does put it in out of compliance with this hundred-foot, you know, it's certainly within a hundred feet of the panels, a hundred feet of the fence, is that a structure? You know, these are the questions that I was hoping to get asked.
So is that hundred, hundred feet, what other, um, fields we're doing, is that something you, you, you experienced in the field, or? That was our regulation, the, the number two there and number five, I don't know if, I wouldn't say they would conflict, but the other portions of the battery storage systems and the, and the solar array, um, if, if the requirement, or if the practicality of your array and, and equipment requires, I mean, the ones we saw, everything was within the battery storage, the inverters and, and transformers and such were in a row, and.
It's all pretty neat, all.
Yeah.
So, so, the, the other thing to point out is, is, is we have, there's a proposed allowance of fifteen-foot minimum distance between any other portion of the ESS, so that it's, it's auxiliary equipment that supports the ESS is other equipment.
Yes.
Yes, and I wouldn't consider array critical equipment. I think, uh, the major switching gear that disconnects the, uh, field from the world.
Yeah. Would be.
Would be critical.
So, what I'm looking at is basically three sets, three locations where equipment would be, so one is like that pad that's normally, when you look at an array, it's, it's away from the array, it's what you see on the poles. That's the switchgear stuff, and that is typically a hundred feet away, that's normally not an issue. And then, there's also the standard equipment, like the inverters and the transformers, that's what you'd see when you open up the fence, walk into an array, you see all the panels and the racking. And even on an array that does not have battery storage in it, you'll see a pad there that has the inverters on it. The way we had planned to do it, because those connect to each other, and they're, you know, we wanna keep everything more or less located in the same area, was to have that pad with the standard solar equipment there, the inver- inverter and the transformer there, and the battery pad next to it. So whether or not that inverter, like the standard equipment that comes with a normal solar array, is considered critical, I can, I could definitely see it being fifteen feet away from the battery to make sure that you have room to get around battery as its own unit, and then the rest of the solar equipment as that's own unit. But to keep those a hundred feet away from each other, I'm just looking at it from where our projects are already designed and approved now, how do I fit that in, and it's pretty tight. I don't know if I can get those a hundred feet apart without substantially changing the number.
So I guess we need to build a block wall between them.
Is that.
That would be a suitable separation from other critical equipment.
So, critical equipment is kinda vague here, maybe some more verbiage, ver- verbiage around that to, to specify, you know, um, the inverters and the switchgear.
And think of it this way, Ernie, too, the, the more separation you put between the hazard, you know, that isn't gonna take out the rest of the equipment, the longer you're gonna preserve the ability of that field to produce something, you lose the battery container, you know, the battery container. If you lose the battery container, the transformers, the switchgear, and all that, you have nothing.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's, so I, I think there's, obviously, if we had this before, and we had proposed this recently, and we were talking about this from the beginning of the design, we would have this all and try to move things around to make it work with this. I think, like you said, putting a wall, there's solutions that we can find to spread that, to, to separate these two things and kinda keep them where we had more or less designed them to go. I think the bigger questions for me was like this hundred, hundred-foot minimum from any structure, I'm assuming that's not fences, you don't wanna keep the fence a hundred feet away.
Correct.
And as far as like other panels, can be within a hundred feet, if the rows of the panels come, you know, say, they're typically around like, you know, twenty or thirty feet from where these batteries.
If somebody had, you know, for some reason, if you had some sort of shed outside of the fence, you know.
Right, or like a home or something, that's, that's what you're talking about, it's our structure.
Well, you, and, and it's a dual thing, right, we said these have to be a hundred feet from the property line.
Right.
So.
Right, okay.
You know, you're not, if you're complying with that, you're not gonna be within a hundred feet of a house.
The array's not a structure. Okay, all right, that's, yeah, that's, I clarified that.
So, so once again, there's a vagueness in there, and you know what vagueness does. Maybe, maybe some, some more verbiage around it, explaining what type of structure, or, or what type of, what's critical equipment.
But, we'll be talking about.
Or do you wanna, or did you intentionally leave it vague?
Well, sometimes, leave it vague, because then you have some room to, to, to negotiate, you know, and, and we, and we do provide a way for that distance to be reduced by, you know, so, if they come to, come and say this isn't critical equipment, and, and they're willing to loo-, if that container was to catch on fire.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and it took out that equipment, and they didn't think it was critical, it's their loss.
Okay, okay, that makes sense.
Well, I think then, for now, Ernie, we would expect you to work with the captain in terms of your plan for future systems. We have this guy in stock, and then when we get a report back, it's the planning board.
So we'll, that's, so we don't really wanna redo the site plan, right, so if we work, if you guys work together, and, and you and Kurt are happy with what the proposal is, because it's, we've already, we've already seen it, and we've already approved it, and you can't go back and say, no, deal with that new zoning, it makes sense, does that make sense?
Have we seen the site plan with the storage boxes on there? Not, we have not seen it yet, so to us, there, there is no.
There's just, there's just a cement pad.
No, not e- not even, not even in the site plan that we looked at.
I think I did, I submitted it.
I mean, I've never seen that.
They're at, they're at the locations that we had the equipment pad at, it's an additional pad there, I had submitted it, but, you know, as far as, we appreciate the work, Mr. Carlson and Mr. Nexon have done here, so I, we're happy to work with them until everybody, those two are happy to move forward with that.
I'm more concerned about safety stuff and it's, and it's.
And we're certainly willing to work with all the applicants, you know, it was a thing, we had, we had approved site plans, new piece stuck on it, hadn't considered it, you know, did our research, came up with a proposal, you know, shipped it to, you know, Ernie got this a few days ago. The other applicants, you know, that are, that are coming before for a modification of site plan got this information. One of the applicants was, is what was the company that accommodated us by showing us around their existing facilities, and we appreciate that too. And maybe, you know, we work out these details because these are our recommendations for you to put as conditions, okay? It's not a zoning change, it's a, it's a condition that we're recommending that you put amend into the plans. And if we work with Ernie and the other applicants and we say fifty feet, but we wanted to give a document to these applicants and future applicants to say, here, if you're gonna propose this, this is what we're thinking.
There's no standard in place yet through NFA or anything, so we're playing, we're playing catch up and we're, we're trying to play nice with everybody. Obviously, in our world, we err on the worst case scenario. So, you know, like Kurt said, the parameters we're putting in are strictly our recommendations, and it may not work for every single site, and we would work with those contractors and those companies, obviously within reason.
And you don't think we should add this to our bylaw, I mean?
Okay, so there's two, two parts to this, okay? There are these energy storage systems as accessory uses to some principal use, okay? So the solar field is the principal use in this case, it's accessory to it. These also can be used for what they call peak shaving at manufacturing facilities, critical data centers, something like that. So, energy storage is nothing new, okay? But it was lead acid technology, actives, technology, really much easier to deal with as opposed to this very dense lithium ion technology that we have all seen, if it fails, you know, is a little more spectacular, and it's a little more difficult to deal with. And then we did, through the solar bylaw committee, see that he's coming. It was like all of a sudden that train came around the corner, it was like, oh. And we did, the solar bylaw committee did recommend to put another line in for energy storage facilities, because there is the potential for a company to come in and just put storage system in, for peak shaving, for power demand. And, you know, I know that's in the proposed bylaw. The one thing I wanna say, just, you know, cause I know the public's watching and, you know, we do see some of these rather spectacular hoverboard things, this is similar but much different technology, those were, you know, low grade batteries. The UL standards that these are required to meet, look at two major things. One, the cell, the cell which is this thing that looks like a double A battery, maybe a little bit bigger, okay? And the component pack. So there's battery management equipment that monitors temperatures within these packs. And when that temperature exceeds the criteria, it basically shuts the systems down, correct, Ernie? So that's to prevent the thermal level. The next step above that is, it's okay, they deal with it on a cellular level, they deal with it on a pack level. And everything is, and I thought, it was interesting when we went on the tour, I thought maybe, cause these are just racks and racks of batteries, I thought it would just take that one battery offline, you know, they take the whole container offline. So, it's a, and it's all remotely monitored, it's got computers in, and it's in their interest to monitor these systems to get optimal output.
And there's several redundant safeties in place, I mean, the systems you've seen are spectacular.
Eight feet chain, chain link fence, does it need to be chain link or does it, are you worried about obscuring the, the boxes? Do you wanna be able to see through the chain or, or something more?
No.
Obscuring, it's, it's more for visual effect?
It is, and the arrays that are in place now have.
So chain link with, with plastic slats or something to hide?
Or some sort of, yeah. Curve field.
On that, apologies, Ben, now, Nexon, or, I think it's on the Griffin Road project. So with the fence, and we appreciate the, the work and spirit of the town on, on all this, it's new to all of us, so we really appreciate the homework that's been put in. Would the, is the proposal in the bylaw for a fence around the battery itself? Or if there's already one for the overall array, does that account for that concern?
It does, the specificity would be, if this was a standalone, you would require that as well.
Just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, but the array fence doesn't.
And your facility, as we've seen in the proposal, is nowhere visible to anybody.
Yeah.
So.
Yeah, everyone's favorite.
We do too.
Well, that, that, that facility does have some view from South Sturbridge Road, but they did put some eight foot stockade, stockade like fence, wood fence down there, and a bunch of harbor biting, but this container would not be able to see from that location. And it's in the middle, a hundred foot distance for them.
One question, are any existing solar arrays going to come back with this?
So, Mr. Mello is here with three.
They're not, I think she meant built, like already built up though?
Already built up, yes.
Okay.
Finished and built yet, so.
Yeah, those are, so theirs are permitted, we haven't seen, Bill, we haven't seen any applications for operating facilities.
But it's certainly possible.
Certainly it is, there's smart.
Do they know they have to come back to us or?
It's a modification of the site plan.
Okay, okay.
It's, it's very likely, these are gonna start popping up.
There's investment credits for them and stuff like that.
Send a little letter out to all of our solar owners and say, if you plan on doing this, you should plan on, don't, don't just put one in? Is that something that we need to do, or are we, are we gonna know if they just, we just wanna be safe? Do we need to make, take the effort to?
It's up there one day and we see it.
One day, it's just.
Well, we can't do it.
This is not something that you bring in on a, on a pickup truck.
It's a big construction project.
It'll be a project.
So not necessary.
One of these boxes at fifty-three feet.
Eight, eight by forty.
Substantial.
So people are gonna.
It's a shipping.
But if you wanna be proactive.
It's a shipping container.
So you might notice the crane roll through town.
It is a shipping container, basically.
I mean, if we just have a standard memo and just send it up, just, just to, you know, make sure, remind people.
Okay. Very good, thank you guys.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
So do we need to make a motion that we adopt these for our future plans?
I think we should certainly adopt these for policies and procedure and conditions. And if we can implement any of these into our bylaws too, so it's in stone, but I don't know what.
I think just.
I think what we have for the bylaws is probably adequate, since they do allow it, and it needs site plan approval.
So we have that official book that we created for policies, we have like a, a one that started, so let's add this to our, so let's, we'll vote to, do we have a motion to add?
Make a motion that we adopt these for conditions on, on future solar fields?
And we have second?
Second.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
We, um, the, the procedure for requesting special event permit. When I first, when, when Bill first sent the email, I was thinking in my mind, why do we wanna get involved in something that doesn't involve our department? We wanna keep ourselves out of everybody else's business, and, um, so, but if we can be helpful or we can, and we can, you know, we can.
So, so let, let's, let me give you a little history, the town of Charleston has no mechanism for special events.
Really? None?
Okay, so if you have a one day special liquor license, there's a policy, a set of regulations that do it. When the fire department wants to close Power Station Road for Family Fun Day, we go to the selectmen who have custody of the roads, and they give us permission. When the Lions Club wants to have a toll road, they go to the police chief, and the police chief makes recommendations. But we are having events, and, and I, and I may be changing the name of this because it may not reflect what we're really trying to do. We have no way of trying to make sure that the community is aware, that public safety is, is dealt with. And I presented this to the Board of Selectmen last Tuesday night, and they said, well, make sure that the planning board is informed, and specifically tasked that we have a little talk about this. Okay, it was sent out to all the department heads, the fire chief made, the fire chief's seen this, it very much looks like a special liquor license.
Yes.
Before you start, I was at the meeting, Curtis and I struggled, and I sent a letter to Robin asking what the, cause it was, you presented this with.
Well, Mr. Jennings was there.
I bet.
And my only concern was, was, and Kurt's gonna tell us about it, but the parameters are, I was not part of the board when you approved the 508 process, and I didn't know if this, if there was a limit on how much activity he had, large scale activity, meaning events that you guys put on him, did you put any?
I think he was limited to a certain number, was it ten or thirteen?
No, I don't think there's a number.
I don't know if it wanted to, but we talked about it.
We did, I thought that we limited, limited the number of events he could have, it was talked about.
Yeah, I have to check, but I don't know if I got it.
I think we talked about it, and he said, oh, there will be six a year or something, and I don't, I don't know if we, we, we'll need a look though. I, I, I don't remember specifically, I know we talked about it, but I'm not sure if it's in writing as a condition.
Just to follow with that, and, and Mr., what was his name again?
Jennings.
Mr. Jennings, according to the building specs, the building code, it's a temporary use, and Mr. Jennings was keen to say that that means a hundred eighty days or less, meaning temporary use, meaning that in his mind, maybe he could have large scale events up to a hundred eighty times, which is not possible, of course, but I didn't know if, what the story.
And piggyback on that, my question was also going to be, when I saw this, cause I immediately thought of Ross,
and thought, well, my question becomes, if it's a normal course of your business to have events, why should you have to pay a special permit per event to have an event that you would normally have anyway, so.
I guess there's an issue with parking.
That's, that's one of the issues, is, is off-site parking, so we have, and I, this is not directed specifically at that venue or that event. We, we're seeing, we've been talking about, we haven't done anything about. So who gave, you know, the old home day committee permission to close down the center of town?
Great question.
Well, we've done it for years. When the Blueberry Festival does their thing, they have a site that has site plan, 508 has a site that has site plan. A, a new retail establishment may be opening soon, and may have a grand opening crunch.
Even now, like YMCA camp rents out their facilities to corporations, to Boy Scouts, to whatever, to do something different than they normally do, does that mean every time they do that, because it's different than normal everyday business, do they have to stop pulling this? And we have to be very careful to make sure that of course, saying, alright, 508, every time you do something, you pull this, that means everybody else, big or small, they have to do the same thing.
So, so this, and the reason I'm saying, I'm thinking about, you know, and this is all a figure it out thing.
Absolutely.
You know, changing the title of it is, is cause it's not the event, okay? Because if the event is contained within a permitted venue that already has parking, that already, you know, is complying with everything, it's, it's not special.
No, it sounds like it's more a traffic issue than a event issue.
Right, and, and that's, so when a facility rents their facility to someone else, and they're going to have an overflow amount of parking, how is that dealt with? Well, we've dealt with it before because there's often a liquor license attached to it. But if, if it's a non liquor event, there is no, the rave.
Now, I thought we required them to pay for police detail if they were going to have over a certain number of people attend, or if it was anticipated that.
Right, and that's what we're asking, tell us, tell us what your plan is, we will set, the police chief can set reasonable conditions.
That's fair.
Right, instead of, as I was saying, there was an event that was, was labeled a rave, it was said to be a birthday party. It was at a venue in town, caused a bunch of constamation in the neighborhood.
I bet it did.
And it came upon the community as a surprise. Will other events happen that people aren't aware of the requirement? Yeah, but remember, the definition of rave is a clandestine activity that's not known to the public.
Bet you didn't know that before then.
Didn't sound like anything good.
No, but, you know, in, in the city setting, it is, they took over a warehouse and had a party, right?
And in the country, they take over a farm and have a party.
Or a field.
Oh, I think we call it Woodstock. Woodstock.
Now fire has to get involved because they have a giant bonfire, can't have anything without a bonfire.
So it's, it's a minimal fee, it's, and, and I, when I ran this up the fly pole, I says, do we need to charge a fee? Well, I guess we sort of need to charge a fee for everything.
I mean, as long as it's not overwhelming.
Fifty bucks.
So, I just wanna make sure that, my big concern is, we can't, it's, it's pretty much should be everybody or nobody. Because I, I can just see the, the outcry now, oh, you're, you're, it's a target to us, so, I mean, where does it, it's like set in that standard? Is it if you do something that you're not in business, what you're, you don't normally do? And again, and I say, I have the YMCA camp on my, on my street, and when they have parties or the, the camp down there has, they corporate outings, whatever they're doing, I hear live bands, I don't care, I mean, it doesn't affect, you know, whatever, but, but I hear that, and I could see somebody who's super sensitive.
That live band requires an entertainment license.
So, well, I mean.
Always has.
So those kind of things.
So, correct, because on the flip side of this, so 508's located, and I'm just gonna use them for a minute, they're located on a country road, so the traffic is more heavily felt when they have an event. Tree, our, yeah, Treehouse has, attracts a ton of people, and they have parking, I mean, not parking issues, but they have traffic issues up and down Route twenty, every single Saturday, they cause major, major hiccups, every single weekend. Are we gonna require them to get a special permit every single weekend? And how do you prove that it was Treehouse versus 508 being on the country road? You know it's them because, again, they're the only big business there, but Treehouse, well, they're causing the same traffic issues, but it's just.
Hey, what if 508 has an event? What if 50, not 508, what if, um, Treehouse says they have a special ring your dog event, and then a bajillion people go up there, and they bring their dog, and now there's two hundred more people can usually go up? And that sounds so silly, but.
Oh, it doesn't though, it doesn't.
Is everybody on the same level now as they're at? Do something, that's, we, we just gotta be careful to make sure that we don't single anybody out, be, be, because, you know, um, certain groups, we just need to make sure that it's fair across.
And can we cap it, so that if you are a business, that you are going to have five events per year, where you think you're going to have more people? So you're already paying for the police detail, you're already paying for extra traffic people that are going to direct people, you're already paying a ton of fees to the town, so the town is benefiting greatly. Would you, um, can we say, okay, well, you only have to pay fifty dollars per permit up to, but not more than X, Y, Z dollars?
So, this is a, a suggested policy for the Board of Selectmen to enact, okay? I'm coming before this board because it has some potential to be end use in these questions, okay? So when, when is it not a normal use, you know, and you guys have heard me, I think about this, correct?
Sure, sure.
And we're trying to attack.
No, no, I know that, you're having the discussion.
We're gonna tell you when residents start complaining, we're gonna complain first for them, so, so we can prevent all that complaining later.
So, so most businesses have, have an occupancy, whether it's the number of parking spots, the number of people allowed. So anytime you exceed that occupancy or plan on maximizing, I, you know, I, I don't know. If you've got enough parking for five hundred cars and you put five hundred cars in there, you're still, it's not an event. It's not an event.
Right.
And that's kind of what I'm watching at too. A certain facility on Route twenty has a whole crap load of parking.
Yeah.
And sometimes it fills up and sometimes it doesn't and it's normal.
And, and that's normal for them. The traffic backups from what I've seen on Route twenty from that facility are very few and far between.
Like, does the Cape and Hill, when they have their Easter hunt, do they have to pull one of these?
Well, let's see, hmm.
Because they're, they, that's a pretty huge.
Would they have remote parking?
Well, even if they do, are they nonprofit?
Okay, so influx of traffic that may delay the normal flow of street or area of the event.
I would think they would.
Okay, all right. On-street parking that may impede or restrict the flow on a street. Overflow parking. Off-paved surfaces.
Yep.
We're gonna fill a field, pull cars.
Yep.
Gee, we, why would you know about that?
Yep, yep.
Okay? And remote parking. Those are really, and that's why I've been thinking about re, these are the triggers.
Sure.
Okay? And these are the things that might lead to those triggers.
But for a not, not-for-profit, like them, it, the Board of Selectmen could waive.
Well, actually, a fee zero.
Zero.
Oh, okay, all perfect.
You're missing, but if this is a persistent problem with a business, it's obviously, they need to come back and redo a plan or something.
No, I, so I hundred percent agree. So.
That, I mean, that's only, that's a, this is like a temporary thing, but if it happens twice a week, uh, something's definitely wrong. They can pull as many permits as they want.
Now, you're talking specifically about five oh eight, saying that they're having this event, they have this field. Should we, should they come back in and say, we really want to use this field for parking all the time?
Now, this, this has a limit of ten events per year.
Yeah.
Seems like a reasonable number.
Per business, yep.
Per business.
Yep, no.
But if, but if it can, there's obviously a problem with something.
Why, gee, gee, if, if, if twenty-five times a year I have to park in a field, maybe I should be in the planning board for a site plan.
Sure.
That accommodates that use.
Absolutely.
Is ten too many?
It's, it's, you know.
And then the question becomes, it's how often? Because if five oh eight has events all, and I don't mean to keep throwing them under the bus, but they're. But if every two hours they're having a different event, and sometimes they do, you've got cars coming back and forth, so you're going to.
I, I wouldn't say that every two, I, I, a day, a day or a weekend is an event.
Okay. Well, my point is if we're going by parking, they could easily not have any overflow parking and only fill the parking lots, uh, parking spots that they have. But still have traffic impact. So if we're doing it by parking, by parking space, which I agree with you because I think it's more fair. So then they're doing exactly what they're supposed to do. They're, they're filling their parking spaces as agreed. And they might have tons of traffic, but their only impact is they, they're having the amount of people they're supposed to.
Influx of traffic that may delay the flow of street.
Does it really delay? Because people are coming and pulling in, unless it's so big where they're waiting for a place to park. So that's the.
Exactly.
Well, you're waiting, not everybody's coming in, some people are trying to get by.
That's where the police chief already has authority.
Okay.
This, this is trying to, to be proactive instead of reactive, okay?
Not reactive, right.
There was an incident where a property got rented for off-site parking. Nobody knew it.
Yep.
Road was all jammed up.
Yep.
Police are pulling their hair out, trying to straighten it out.
And if they prep, they could have brought more officers on that day.
Hell, we could have been prepared for it by having the right number of officers.
But we don't, and I, and I, I think that something like this needs to exist.
Absolutely.
But I just want to make sure that there is things in place that it's fair.
Correct.
Because we don't want anybody coming.
No.
Um, you know, five oh eight is five oh eight. There, there, there're gonna be, there are people that hate five oh eight and there are people that love five oh eight. There, we don't want to pick on them. We don't. And, and this, we, we want to make sure that everybody's in the same.
Exactly.
In the same.
Well, and when Camp Floskets is going on, when they have their, um, opening and they are closing, they also have tons of traffic going every weekend. When you drop the kid, all the parents bringing the kids in, all the parents bringing the kids off. The Medieval Manor Place off North Side has events. And so, again, you've got all that traffic. Fay Mountain has their events, um, and so, and they have off-site parking.
Okay. So, so why should, you know, and those groups, which we will call town or civic groups.
Absolutely.
Have these events.
Yes.
These, these things at regular intervals. We have Old Home Day every year.
Yes. Yep.
We'll map out the plan once.
Yes. But they can come back once a year to sit.
It's, it's, it's the same plan over and over again.
What if something, what if something new's happened? What if they're adding such and such and they expect this many more people?
Oh, sure.
It's, at, at least the town.
We, we have a.
It's prepared.
We have a, a proactive business in town, um, that sponsors a one-day liquor license event after the road race.
Oh, yes.
Permit's already been applied for.
Oh, wow. So, because they know they're going to do it.
We know it's Old Home Day. They know that this is gonna happen. They've already applied. They're not putting the regulatory authority in, oh my God, I need this tomorrow. Oh, by the way, I'm on vacation, you know.
Yep.
You know? And yes, there will be people that will either miss this, not know about it. That's fine.
I promise I'll get back to you. Let us have a.
Half of my job is education, is, is education.
Would you be opposed to lowering the fee for businesses that are going to utilize this permit more than, say, five times? Because what I don't want to punish is a business who, in their normal course of business, is going to have traffic.
See, I don't think, I think fifty dollars isn't really that, that.
I think fifty, fifty dollars is.
Yeah, but if you're doing it every weekend.
If there's traffic, it's.
You shouldn't be doing it every weekend. If you're doing it every weekend, then you've got a bad site plan.
But if you're doing it every weekend, it's not a special event, but it's not a special event anymore. If you're doing it every single weekend, it's not a special event.
Okay. Fair enough.
Right.
Um, and again, uh, five oh eight having their, a normal weekend, everybody goes and does their, does their, you know, um, motocross stuff.
That's fair.
Yeah, parking, both parking for five hundred and some cars onsite or something like that.
So, so this is, this is them having an event with six thousand people. That's a, that's a special event.
Okay, then I apologize. Then, yes.
So, the normal course of business, and again, the camp has camp all summer. The normal campers, the, the, even though they just do it in the summer, that's the normal course of business.
Normal course of business, fair enough.
But if they're gonna rent it out to a corporate event and there's gonna be a bunch of people, you know, who are trying to even find, would it pull in?
Yeah, right.
Because, you know, it's like secret that bit. And, and that, then that's an event permit.
Yes.
That may, may need, you know, may need special, special police assistance.
Fair enough. And who will be the final, say, as to the interpretation of the policy? Would that be you? Would that be the Board of Selectmen?
It's a Board of Selectmen's policy.
Okay, so it would be them who gets the final, okay.
No.
Okay. I have a question. Remote parking for an event with shuttle service? We're gonna have some businesses in town that may be utilizing that? Does that apply every day?
Yeah.
So, these are triggers, okay? Now, how does someone park somewhere that isn't a parking lot? We have no provision. We, we can go down a path and it's gonna be very burdensome for, for everyone. You know, there's a big, big dirt parking lot in town.
Mm-hmm.
Okay? Same thing. If we know about it, we plan for it. The police are on board and the traffic plan may not require police at every intersection. Probably not.
Right. Right.
Might require some police presence, assistance, right at the venue.
An extra officer on, I know, in case, you know, at their cost.
But technically, if it's daily, it wouldn't be an event because by definition, an event is something special.
That's why I say we're try, I, I'm trying away from the word event because I'm not, I'm not trying to target, or we're not trying to target events.
Right.
Some complicated issues.
We're trying to target a problem.
Right, exactly. I think that's a much better way to put it.
Um, I think that the, the eight weeks sounds pretty fair. If you're gonna have a huge event and you don't know eight weeks and eight minutes, that's pretty well.
That's correct.
You're probably not planning well.
Something's off with that.
I agree.
The, the ten still seems high to me for a business to, to do that ten times a year where they need traffic control and, and permits and everything else.
It was less than once, less than once a month. Um, and, and, and in reality, who is going?
I mean, kudos to the business that can pull off a major event every month.
Well, like I said, they're pulling it off in a major event every month, then they've got bad planning and site planning and, and.
So you're, are you saying, is, is there somebody who's going to go, that's gonna even go close to that? So, oh, how many, how many events do five oh eight have? How many do they have?
That exceeded their five hundred number.
I see right now that they have, um, a Spartan event in May and a Tough Mudder event in June.
Mm-hmm.
And they have, I was looking at some information that was sent to me today, and there's a KTV thing like this weekend. No, no forecast known of more than what that property can handle.
No, I don't, no. I think those two events are the two big ones that will trigger this, but I think the rest of their events will just be normal.
Normal activity. I mean, uh, you know, and, and sort of, what about the Tweeter Center? Right? I mean, that's an event.
Right.
Every time there's a thing. But they have already organized a huge plan. They put it in place every time there's a thing. Gillette Stadium.
I just gonna use them, yes, yeah.
All those things happen now. I'm not saying we're, we wanna be Foxborough.
I think with the ten, I think that there's a point when you keep on doing special permits or whatever. I, you open a new business and you have these gigantic festivals every weekend because they go off well. There's a point where, where the Board of Selectmen or you're, you're gonna say, I think it's time to go and, and do a site plan with.
Yes.
At, with, I, we're close enough. It's not like with this giant city with the things that are happening. We'll get, or even on, we're.
Right.
So I, I wouldn't, I think the limit is when you're close to that ten or, you're gonna, you're gonna get some attention.
You could also get a special permit or a special permission to do more than ten. If, if you're, if for whatever reason you need more than ten, you know you're gonna need more than ten, you can apply for that. That's where special permitting comes in place. I mean, they're rooming almost all of these, all of these rules, if you will, for wiggle room.
I think, I mean, I, I think it's necessary and I think for planning and for safety.
Yeah, safety, I think is huge.
Um, we want to make sure that there's no, you know, if a huge traffic backup, we want to make sure that the ambulances can get through.
Exactly.
Our, our other neighbors, other, can we get through that road to make sure that they're getting emergency services?
I, I wouldn't want a neighbor throwing a rave every, every weekend of the summer. So, that's why I'm thinking ten is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think the summer is more neighbors or the other people in the town that.
But if they're doing, if they're, if they're doing that, that's beyond the problem. But if they're, if, if your neighbor's throwing those kind of parties, I mean, you, you live in the long time town. I don't know.
Patty, we should move on, I think.
Okay, no, so I, I, I agree. It's, it's, it's probably a good thing.
So, you know, one of the questions, the, the one overriding question is, is do you see anything here that we're overreaching into the planning board's realm?
No.
So that, that was a concern.
There are some, some comments we should.
So, we'll take some.
John Sandbore, twelve Jennings Road. Events were talked about. You know what an event is a weekend, right? So it's, again, Friday night, Saturday and Sunday. Just, just to clear the air. So if, if somebody's saying, well.
Or it could be one night.
It could be one night. Right, right.
Okay.
Okay? So here's the other thing. Um, Treehouse Brewery, they've got a lot of traffic, I'm sure. I, I've actually been on Route twenty when I've seen traffic backed up for a mile in the slow lane and people have to go in the fast lane. Um, I checked a while ago. It's been several years. DOT statistics on Route twenty traffic. I think, um, in that section of Sturbridge, in Charlton, it's about nineteen or twenty thousand cars per day. Brookfield Road is somewhere around thirty-five hundred, four thousand, I think. So some of the events that are planned, and you brought, you brought up five oh eight, I think that a special permit would be nice because when you get a lot of people trying to get there all at once, it can back up traffic. So, take a tape measure and, and just see how long a car is and then put, say, three feet in front of it and three feet behind it. And then you're talking bumper-to-bumper traffic, stop and go. So you're about twenty feet. So you take three hundred times twenty and now you're over a mile. So, in that case, if you have three hundred cars that are waiting to go into a facility on Brookfield Road, you could be backed up all the way to Route twenty. And we've seen that in the past. I actually, um, documented that, um, for a Spartan game a while ago where my daughter was coming to drop off grandkids at our house. And she timed it. From the time it took to Osgood Road to Jennings Road, it took her twenty minutes. That's about a half mile. So, I don't know what their revised site plan shows for five oh eight, but, um, that, that's why I think a special permit would be in order for.
It's not gonna eliminate that.
It's, but.
But you'll keep everybody noticed. Everybody will know.
Won't eliminate that. You will know it's gonna happen, but it's not gonna eliminate that. Am I wrong?
But, okay, so then somebody brought up the fact of an ambulance and fire and so forth.
And planning, so, I mean, maybe other ways in, maybe some sort of a, a, a detour. May, maybe these, maybe knowing these events, pulling the permit will allow for people to, to be, for other routes or other options or.
And, and unfortunately, it's not when everybody's at work. It's on weekends that, that we're seeing these events, so just wanted to bring that up. And, uh, thank you.
Thank you.
So, before you go, so would, do you consider that any event at five oh eight would be an event that would trigger this or just anything that would exceed their?
I think Mr. Meska's had the right idea. I think if it's in their site plan or if it's something where the police chief is, is involved, where they need special traffic. Where there's a perception that it's going to be impactful to the neighborhood, whether it's delays or, or potential for, uh, fire or ambulance services or anything. Just to, to trigger the neighborhood and to trigger the services.
Yeah, I guess I, my question is, what is that trigger point? Sometimes, sometimes it might happen before they knew it, you know? It may not have been expected, but it happens.
Well, in this case, Mr. Meska said they, they have parking for five hundred. So if they're expecting two thousand vehicles with off-site and shuttle and buses and everything like.
Oh, that would absolutely, that would absolutely.
Then, then I would say a special permit.
If they're parking on the road, that's not right.
Yeah, I, I don't think there's any real hard and fast, like if you're one car over, but at the same time, I mean, if, if it's.
There may be other days that they don't exceed their capacity but still cause a problem on the road. How do you deal, how do you deal with that, you know?
I mean, it's, it's.
And if there's, you know, on a normal day, if there's a traffic accident on Brookfield Road and we bring a bunch of emerg, we, we end up closing the road and it does, and it causes problems. But those are, you know, out of the norm things. When, uh, you know, when a known entity is renting the property for, a property for something special. And, and they're saying, come join six thousand people, staggered, of course, staggered.
Yeah.
You know?
Yep, oh, absolutely.
Six thousand and more, same.
I, I guess I, I agree that we should have this. It's just I'm, I'm not clear on the triggering point on, on, on where, and it's, it's, it's big.
The triggering point is if you're going to, um, if you're gonna have on-street parking, it may implement, you know, restrict traffic. I mean, I, I. We have nothing now.
Yep.
And this is something.
Yep, nope.
And it could be tweaked as, as you go. You find out that, you find something in common and then you change it and you improve.
Thing. We just had a discussion here with, with some, uh, some developers of a certain, you know, energy storage system. They raised some reasonable issues on, from their end. You know, we're gonna work through this. We're a growing community. You know, we're not, we're not the Tweeter Center.
This is, we chose a good stone here so we can, we can make corrections.
And it's a policy. It's not a violation. It's a policy and the selectmen can change their policy as they need.
Perfect.
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
So we have, um, the. Four score, the public hearings for four score holdings, um, special permit application for one, what if what's Sturbridge Road, Route twenty? Um, we have the period consultant for order.
All right, anyone here for the four score discussion, please sign in.
Thank you.
So, tonight we have, um, Trinity.
Yes.
In, in the order consultant to, that's what we're primarily waiting for, for the, the rest of the four score. Um, hopefully it went well and you guys are happy with how it went. Do we want to have, um, the consultant from Trinity?
I think so, sure. We have Christine Davies and Christine Anne from Trinity. If you'd like to come up and, um, come on, have them present their, their findings.
Yeah, could you?
Do we have anything in the packet?
No, no.
No, okay.
So you can, okay, just feed the.
This was a very, um, rushed kind of study. We just got the signed contract and they expedited this for you, but they don't have a report ready for you this evening.
Yep.
So.
Okay.
They're going to present what they found.
So for the record, right, we, we don't have a formal report. We will have a formal report, so everybody will be able to see that. We'll do a presentation. Again, four score is really, they're pretty, we're pretty clean. The only, the big thing we were waiting for is the, was the odor review. We didn't want to let anything happen without that. So we'll go through here and, um, we'll take questions as needed.
Sure. Um, and maybe just a quick suggestion or just to introduce the topic. Um, sometimes what I've seen at public hearings like this is, um, does four score want to present anything initially, just what they're doing on odor control? Just to tell the room, um, outside of our own sort of interpretation of what they're doing, what we've seen, um.
I think we have, we have.
So they've submitted an, an odor mitigation plan.
Okay, and you guys have seen that.
We've seen that.
We have done their basic.
What we're, what we're looking for you is, is inadequate.
Yeah, you tell us.
Sure.
It's kind of where we're at right now. We've seen their plan and we're the laypeople that we're looking for you to say.
It's gonna smell, it's not gonna smell.
Okay, well, um, so there's a, okay, um, I'll. Okay, well, um, so there's a, okay, um, I'll start right from the top and make it, uh, at a very high level, very encouraged about what we've, what we've seen here. So whenever I see activated carbon as like a chosen filtration method, um, that is a reliable, uh, it's advisable for a, a facility like this, completely above board and it's something that vendors can be held to account for, provide, uh, basically the guaranteed controls that you'd be looking for in reduction. Now, there's more to that and part of our review that I was explaining to Bill and to my colleague Christine, is I wanted to just be clear like what the odor objectives were and I'm going to paraphrase them instead of just rereading it.
Yep, thank you.
So from, I guess, just from a layman's perspective, it would be simply, you shouldn't be able to smell the odor from outside the building. And I couldn't really say it simpler than that.
Perfect, yep.
Um, so what that would mean to me and, um, Trinity, we're, our expertise is, is air quality and air pollution. So we look at a lot of different industries. There's two different types of emissions that we're always concerned with. There's direct emissions, the stuff that comes out of vents, uh, stacks, things like that. There's also fugitive emissions, and those are kinda hard to define, but they, they come from anywhere. Like fugitives can come from storage piles, it could come from open, openings in the building, like doors, bay doors, windows, things like that. So, um, carbon filtration is very good at controlling things that are directly captured, um, by exhaust systems and they're directed to your carbon filter and then exhausted. Where problems could occur is if fugitives are an issue. And so if we were to look at a building with lots of openings or holes, bay doors, things like that, we might expect lots of fugitives. And example, we've seen like waste transfer stations, they are notorious for fugitives despite what the best efforts to control. So, um, if I had to be critical, um, I, I really like seeing activated carbon. It's a little bit unclear what their ventilation system looks like, like, one question I would have, is there any ventilation which is uncontrolled, which is in any of these cultivation areas or processing areas which are leaving the building? And so I am under the assumption, just from everything I've seen and, and keep in mind, we likely have questions which we might formally write back, but, um, are there any exhaust systems which are not controlled by activated carbon?
We can ask them. Yeah, you have the answer for that right now.
Well, uh, just so happens.
He's got the plan.
Do you wanna introduce yourself?
That I have a visual that I can pass around.
Do you guys, do you mind this kind of?
No, no, this is perfect.
I think it'll be easier than, than one presentation and then another, though with the standard way, if, if it's okay with.
Yeah, absolutely. This is perfect.
You guys can share these.
The only thing that you'll do, will you do us a favor and, um, be, if, before you speak names, just so we have it for the record for the minute?
Okay.
So, uh, we brought with us tonight Rob Adams, who's the president of Control Environment Structures. Uh, he's been assisting us with our odor mitigation plans and sort of helping us to design what you have before you. Um, and so, Rob, I'll let you kinda dig in and, and tell these folks what they're looking at and, and answer the question.
Sure.
Thank you.
Uh, for thirty-five years I've been building clean rooms and other special environments. My company's also the largest vehicle storage contractor in northeast United States. And we build these special environments, that's our specialty. The, I can make it pretty simple, is that a cannabis building is like a prison. It's locked down, there are no fugitive openings. So that's one thing that goes in the favor. And then how we would deal with any, any fugitive odors getting out of the building is that we make sure with the, uh, the HVAC system that the building's always under what's called negative pressure. So it's bringing in clean outside air without odor. And then everything that goes out of the building goes through the odor removing filters. And we have two systems, we have one for the building itself, so that if it escapes within the building, then there's the negative pressure in, the exhaust out goes through filters before it, before it gets into the atmosphere. Not only that, but we put it in a high velocity stack and we inject it at high velocity up into the jet stream so that the concentration that's where there's a, I'm sure you can explain about concentration levels, is that that would make it very difficult for it to end up on the ground in any kind of concentration that is noticeable on your nose. So the, then the flower rooms, which are the most odoriferous part of the building, they have their own separate exhaust system through, uh, uh, carbon filters and then out with the same high velocity exhaust up into the stratosphere. So that's, and that's what's diagrammed on the drawing.
Would you mind introducing yourself, please, for everyone at home?
I think, I, well, he wasn't introduced.
Okay, my apologies.
Sorry.
So my follow, my next question actually, which he answered, was have they considered billing pressure? And we were looking for negative differential pressure, particularly to control the fugitives, so a perfect answer as far as I'm concerned. And I would like to also say, um, so we, we serve industry and, but in the capacity of just cannabis cultivation, we only work with townships and counties. It's basically a company policy, so we have no interest in our, or other clients in, in the cannabis sector, just to be aware of. So I'm not here to try to push something that, um, I have no vested interest in cannabis, just outside of good odor control, um, and, and good odor policy. And I would just also say as credit just to the town of Charlton, um, the problem I see, uh, when I work with other counties, and you work quite a bit with a lot in California right now, is when it's not really well defined what the objective is. And I've seen odor tried to be defined in terms of a nu, a metric, like an odor unit quantity off property. Sometimes they define it at receptors. So you guys haven't done that, you made it very easy because it's so clear, the crystal clear, you don't wanna smell the odor outside the building. So it makes the design that much clearer also for the proponents that you need to filter this stuff. And so, um, when I hear the differential pressure, what's very important about that is that if you have like office areas, those should be, um, relative to the, to your production areas. Um, the production area should be more negative than that and just so the airflow naturally will want to go outside, um, the, the exhaust system. So we're, these are all the, I mean, these are all the right answers. And to be honest, like, I've seen a lot of poor applications in my time on things like this. Ones where a lot of people try to get away with, well, we'll put it in if it's needed, like, let's try it without it hurt.
Oh, yes, oh, yes.
And then you get in the papers, like, all the complaints, like, it's, I could show you hundreds of articles, yeah.
We've seen that too, that's why we, we.
Yes, yes, that's why you're here.
Yes, so, um.
We know that it's doable because, because we actually toured a facility that had zero odor. You did not know what it, what they were doing on the inside, so that's why we came, you know, um, we had our, um, uh, multiple people. I, I think, um, even Kurt and our Board of Health Inspector, we went to a tour and there was no. So that's why we set those standards and, and.
Right. Um, and so if I had to, I mean, I wouldn't be doing my job if I wasn't being nitpicky here, but if I had to just raise some things that might be concerned, obviously the, uh, uh, the lifespan of the filter is always in question. There are so many variables that are at play. And if I understand what the vendor is saying, it's about a year, perhaps eighteen months, but they also said very clearly, and the proponent was good to recognize this, it might be less than that, it might be like six months, it might be eight months. So how is that determined? Like, I wouldn't hope that you'd wait for a complaint before that was determined. So we would want to see some sort of protocol and it's really up to them to just come up with what the plan is. But who's going on site, outside to check, is there a smell, how often does that happen? And then what happens if there is a smell? And if that happened, say, eight months later, does that mean now you've changed your policy to change the filter, say, once every six months or something like that? So that would be an improvement if we were looking at, you know, the odor mitigation, um, protocol or the standards that they're trying to come up with internally for overall.
Is there a testing method that you can actually test those filters to see if they're, they're still working or not?
Yeah, so the vendor can do a test, um, let's say midway through the, like, at any time after it's been in use to determine how much expectancy is left in the filter. There's a lot of ways you could do it and I have to say that there's no perfect answer. And because it's kind of convoluted, I had like the more practical, like, everybody can understand approach, where if you were to smell it, that you have a quick way of replacing the filter right away, you've noted it and then for the next time around, you're in advance of that.
Sure.
Other than saying, well, lab said theoretically, we could get four more months out of it, right? So I would say just be more reasonable, yeah.
Sure.
So it all depends on the saturation of that filter. Now, now that would be part of their maintenance plan, I, I assume that's already in your order and, and your maintenance plan. Um, the thickness of, of the, of this, this, the material, thickness of the carbon, did you look at that and?
So. So another thing in that, so if we're wanting to the technical nature, the carbon's most effective when you have a slower airflow going through. And we have limited, let's say, engineering specs on this that we are looking at here and that could be improved. One thing would be, one thing that's a bit of a mystery is like when I look at the, the overall site plan, uh, the diagram here, we know what areas are being controlled by filters. I'm a little bit unsure of how many filters are being used, where the ventilation is, where the exhausts are. And perhaps some of the stuff is still being sorted out, but that would be something to consider. Like, the vendor would have specifications, like, you need this much material for that much airflow and it'd be well and like calculated to an exact science. And I'm sure they're going through that, although I can't speak for them, but that would be something we wanna see.
We could ask, do you have that information?
They can speak.
So we, we brought Mr. Adams tonight because he'll be in charge of designing those systems and prescribing the filtration, the airflow. So he can speak to all of that now. We are far enough along with, um, the design that, that he, he can probably speak to air velocity and, and that type of stuff. If you wanna hear that, um, if, if it, if it pleases the board, we can work with Trinity to, um, identify those targets and, and, um, assume that we will meet all of the, the specification that, that Trinity would set forth as acceptable.
I think that's probably the proper way to go since you could spout numbers all night long.
Normally, I mean, you would say, you know, um, is Trinity happy? Do they believe that this is a, this is a, a good plan and, and, and have they pretty much, you know, taken all your suggestions, um, in account? And you have, that's really, I mean.
Now, you've said you've built hundreds of these, so in your, in another facility of a similar size, similar scope, how often do you typically have to change out the filters?
Okay, well, that, that's a great question. It depends on how much odor is getting in there. Cause if there's a lot of odor going in, the life of the, the carbon's an absorber, it sucks it into the pores of the carbon.
Okay.
And so, once you have too much odor in there, it won't hold anymore.
Sure.
But there are also good design principles from the carbon filter makers and there is a certain size filter that goes with a certain airflow.
Okay.
The airflow is determined in the design for the facility, for the size of the room. And so it's pretty easy math to do that. The important thing is that in our facilities, we do a calendar based change out procedure.
I was gonna ask that, yes.
We don't do six months, cause who the heck remembers when you last changed the filter? So when we put our, first of all, we do a conservative filter change out because from an operating cost standpoint, when filters get clogged and fans have to work harder, it uses more electricity. So we don't even want it to get to that point.
Okay.
And the cost of the filters is so minimal compared to the cost of electricity.
You took my next question.
Right, so the, uh, so in our design, we will have January first, April first, July first, October first.
Okay.
Those are the days that you do it and it's easy to keep track of that.
Absolutely. And it's in writing, that's in the plan, that's something that you, absolutely.
Right, it's in the book that you, that the oper, the operators of the facility get.
Yes. Okay.
And their facilities people, now, no one can guarantee that they, they did it on January first. They may have to write in there, you know, January sixth, that's gonna be close enough. But the, we get away from the three months, six months, um, process.
Thank you.
So another, if, being critical, I, I couldn't help but see and, uh, not so much a technical point, but certainly a legal one that came up. If I look at this, um, there was mention about, so we're trying to control odor to get down to, um, we'll say zero or near zero outside the building. And it does intend, or the proponent intends to, uh, do that. I did note that there is some wording in here that says, it talks about what unreasonably impractical is. And I think this gets into the philosophy of, you, you know, you use the best available control technology and there's economic feasibility to that. And I would hope that their proposed odor control solution is indeed considered economically feasible and they wouldn't hide behind the fact that, oh, there's this one clause in Massachusetts law here that says, we don't necessarily need to do this. So that would be something just to raise to everyone's attention, that it was mentioned in the proposal. Doesn't seem like, from everything I'm hearing, that's not the spirit of what's going on, but they, I imagine if, if for whatever reason, there is a lot more odor than was expected, you could come in, that this might come up, so just be aware that this was mentioned and I don't know if there's some responsibility.
You know, the way I wrote it, so, um.
Yeah, I mean, I could speak to that. So Massachusetts state statute, um, essentially has said that, you know, bylaws, um, for the cannabis industry can't be quote unquote, or end requirements can't be quote unquote, unreasonably impracticable. And legislature actually went further to define what they mean by that, which is something that a reasonably prudent business person wouldn't undertake. And so, you know, we obviously don't know legally what the courts would say about that definition, but they've tried to be pretty clear. Certainly, industry standard practices are not gonna be considered, um, unreasonably impracticable. And even to the extent that, you know, you've got a vendor here who's saying, this is our standard practice that we, you know, propose for any client that works with us, again, it's a standard business practice. Although above what's required, somewhat standard, so I wouldn't think that it would fall. It's, it's really, you know, designed to ensure that, um, that you can't make things impossible for the operators, I think.
I mean, as a condition, we would always, I mean, we've talked about no odor, that's our policy, that's with, you know, across the board, we don't want any odor and that would be a condition on, on any such approval anyways. Um, I guess it could end up in a, a, a big court battle, but we've seen businesses have zero odor and it's, it's feasible, it's not any different, so, um.
Yeah, I mean, we're designing, well, I, I'd let these guys speak, but we're designing to, to that standard. So that's the, that's, that's the goal and, you know, I believe, uh, the consultants here are kind of speaking to that point, so.
Have you seen that terminology be, before, is it a normal thing to have in?
Yes, um, I've seen it before, but I think what I would say, like, when I was explaining this to my, my colleague, my interpretation of this is if, if the proponent did not think they could meet the zero odor condition, they should not be putting the facility in this jurisdiction or right here. There are some industries you cannot eliminate odor from and a transfer station would be one of them, or in a composting facility, those are rendering, we're dealing with those all the time, we have to live in a world of compromise there. But in that world, then we talk about setback distances and proper zoning and things like that.
And unreasonable odor as opposed to no odor.
Right, um, so in this case here, um, and, and then we do intensive modeling to ensure, you know, that we are minimizing it to a strength that's tolerable. But in this case, like, I do believe that you can control odor to your objectives and they can also meet that and the technology they've chosen gets them there. So again, it's good, I think, that at least all this language is in front of everybody, just to be transparent that that's there, but I don't see an issue, um, and, and if they can just also confirm that, you know, odor won't be from the facility or their vendors can certainly, then there's no issue.
Good.
Um, and then finally, probably a good recommendation, and we say this to any, any facility which, um, is on the radar for odor with, with a township or other regulator, um, they should have some sort of just best management practices, plans that they do. And we don't need to be too crazy with this, it would be stuff like doors should be kept shut, there should be signage so that, you know, workers don't accidentally do something, which we see this a lot in.
Open the window.
Yeah, well, and so much, I mean, this is a, this is a different case, cause this is a more, I mean, this is a building that's under a lot of different security conditions. So I see a lot of bay doors left open for extended periods of time by contracted truck drivers that aren't really working with the company and then they, they all blame each other for doing it. And so, um, but to get, basically, a best management practices plan would just identify just simple things that are done to ensure that odor is contained within the building and some of them would be the change out on the filters. And then also part of that would be like a complaint form, so that if a complaint does get lodged to the facility, they know who's responsible for dealing with the complaint and what the time to get back to the complainant or complaine is. And typically, we would say, you know, respond within like one or two days to any complaint and identify what actions were taken, notify whoever needs to be notified, just simple stuff. And when things go well, no one's ever filling out those forms and they are left blank year after year after year. But it's good to have those, it's good to assign the responsibility, it should be somebody that. Should be somebody there, or if there's like a, like, what happens if you do get a complaint? Who does it go to? Who writes it down? Like, who specifically does it? So that should be just identified in, in their operating protocols. Um, and, and it's, in a nutshell, that's the, the summary. There's not really much more to bring to the table because I don't see any issues. And typically, I, I was saying, I have a lot more work in front of me because we have to start then going into their, basically fighting them on control technologies, 'cause, um, but I think you, I think it's a good application in terms of odor control we've seen from us.
Okay, thank you.
So do we wanna go one step further and, and have them submit a plan and, and look at that? Or do we think that it's something we can?
Condition?
A, a condition that it's, that, that there is zero emissions, and I don't know.
I mean, I think we definitely, it'll definitely be a condition that there is no, there's no, we don't want, there should be no odor.
Right, I think it would be helpful to know, to have the report from Trinity with those.
Okay, with s- with some more specifics, some of the more technical aspects to it.
So we'll, we'll have the fancy before, um, right, right now.
So, if, if, so we could get, um, four scores engineered to, to work with Trinity to show them the plan and, and you could look at that and say, yes, this is sufficient, the number of filters, the thickness of the filters, the, you know.
So, just one comment on that, and, and not that, that's not reasonable for the board to ask, but the building itself and the level of detail that we've gone into in terms of the design, we don't necessarily have the specifics on where the ventilations are gonna go for each room, um, you know, exactly how it's gonna be there. We wouldn't, you know, typically anticipate being at that level until we're much closer to pulling building permits, you know, beginning demolition, sort of starting the actual build and have, you know, commissioned construction drawings. Obviously, this is a, still a preliminary set of plans, um, and so, you know, to the extent that we could work with Trinity, you know, going forward.
And condition of the site plan with that going forward, that at least, that we have this approval.
That's right.
So before, so before any sort of building permit is done, we would want a, a Trinity sign-off saying, everything looks reasonable, and, and that would be, if, are we thinking that we wanna approve this tonight? But we would, it would certainly be a condition that we would want a sign-off saying, you know, you know, it looks, we, you did your review, but now this is the final, this is the final, final, this is where everything's gonna be. Um, does that, doable, that makes sense?
So, Madam Chairman, Kurt Meskis, Building Commissioner. Um, one is an educational question for me to, to the various experts is, um, I've also heard besides carbon is, is ozone. Is that an appropriate, is that something that goes into these systems? Don't, you don't have to answer that right now, but that's just one of those. And you, and you're talking about a, a sort of a subjective thing. We had a discussion earlier about, okay, so it doesn't smell outside, great, got it. To who?
That's, that's true.
You know, and, and then, then you say, well, we'll get the, the worker from inside to do a walk around the building. The guy whose nose is totally blown out because he's been working in it for twelve hours or two hours or whatever. So, you know, just, and I know there's other projects that are gonna be coming down the road that, that deal with this, so I just, you know, the guy, one of the guys that'll probably field the complaint, you know, I have a phone in my office that people like to call.
It would probably be the Board of Health though, wouldn't it?
That's where it belongs.
That's where it would go to eventually.
But, but, you know, how, how those procedural issues in your O and M plan for that get dealt with?
Because, I mean, obviously, the, 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 the odor plan, the best management practice plan, we, I mean, those would, those need to be part of.
Yeah, again, that, so the state's gonna review, you know, we still, we've developed those plans to a preliminary level, and, and the process is that, um, at the state level, we submit preliminary plans, and then we get provisional approvals, then we build, and then we come up with all the final operating policies and procedures, which then get reviewed and approved by the state, things like keeping the doors closed, um, you know, employee practices, limited access areas, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and, and at that point, that would be when we would share them with Trinity, um, to, to ensure that, uh, you know, we're, we're all compliant.
Our big control is that you, until you satisfy all of our needs, you don't get a building permit. So that's how it works.
That's, you know, you, you traditionally have a requirement that a notice to proceed be issued on a site plan project, and that any document that was required to get to that point be in place. And I think where your folks are at in this play, the point is, is that the two expert needs to agree on the means and methods, but not the, the mechanics, you know. I, I don't care what size duck we're, we're putting in at this point.
Right.
You know, is this, is this gonna work? And then when, um, when they go to build it out, I'm not a duck work expert. You know, that if we need, if I need assistance with that, then Trinity is still available to, to verify that the design complies with the intent. Is that?
Well, actually, this is a good lead-in because there is one other level of security that we have built into the system is alarms, and there are sensors in the system that read the pressure, the building pressure twenty-four or seven. And if we see that those go out of limits, then it flags the operators that there's an alarm. Uh, I don't think anybody could guarantee that every mechanical system will work perfectly a hundred percent of the time. What these sensors allow you to do, and it's, it's pretty normal HVAC stuff now, not even high cost or anything like that, it would be on there anyway, is that we will get an alarm if one of the fans fails, for example, because we're not seeing pressure across that fan. We'll be out ahead of it before the odor gets out, and the operators would be out ahead of it. So they have the opportunity to monitor, and then they also record data. So that if Mr. Edwards said on October fourteenth at about ten a.m., I smelled something, we can go back into our data files and we can look at the static pressure trend for the building, and if we see a lump in the trend, we'll say, yeah, you know what, that fan went down at that time. But it, then it came back on at eight, eight fourteen. So tha- that, um, is in some degree good business sense, but it's also some degree, uh, self-defense too.
Mm-hmm.
Um, where it at least allows us to have a record that all systems are working properly at the time of the complaint. Or if there was something not working, then we would see it at that time.
Is that all written up in the maintenance plan and the, the, as like, I, I mean, in my world, it's policies and procedures of, of how the, the no- normal activity happens at the facility? Is that all written up, that, I mean, you're?
It is, but it's even simpler than that. I can show you on my cellphone, I have an alarm from the Taunton Candace facility, alarm went off earlier today. And, and it goes on my cellphone and about thirty other people's cell phone. So, and it's because something isn't working right. The, the important thing on all of this is if the design is proper and it works for an extended period of time properly, then if there's a component failure, then you can find the component and fix it and get the design back up.
But is that all written down? Is there actually, this is our policy and these are our, this person is responsible for this, this and this, and if this happens, we do this, is that, and, and that, a written document? And maybe it's also required for the state, but that's something that we would like to ensure that exists in.
Part of the O and M.
It's a facility management, um, item, and, um, all of these facilities have facility managers who are monitoring these alarms and monitoring, um, you know, the, uh, waste, uh, you know, pickup and deliveries to the facility. And so these operational procedures are tighter in these facilities than just about any business in the state. So, um, these would all be worked up in our operational plans. And, um, if, if it were, you know, um, I, I, I think that, uh, with the conditions that are set up, that all of these operational plans and the designs, um, are, are required ahead of a building permit, they'll all be, uh, visible in those plans.
Want to take comments from others?
I just have one question before we get to the audience. Um, you have these high velocity fans or entertainment, as you call them? How noisy are they?
Uh, you'd never hear it. It's, it's up on the roof, and they're actually pretty small.
Okay.
So it's not gonna be, you're not gonna hear it like a steam whistle or anything like that. Um, every compounding pharmacy in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts has these. In order for them to do their sterile work, when they're using hazardous materials, they have to have this system. This is a very common system, it's not just cannabis, this is something that's, they're all over the place. And I've heard them with my own ears, you can, you know, ten feet away, it's not that high a velocity, it's high enough to get it up there and get it entrained into the wind, but it's not so fast that it would be like a steam whistle.
Is it a stack, a ton, or a stack beam?
Yeah, it's three thousand feet per minute, which sounds fast, but it's not that fast.
Your stack.
How high? Ten feet, yeah. And, and that's by statute.
Okay.
We can take.
Well, there was just one more thing, there's a, the wastewater management plan, is that something that we needed to address tonight too?
We do, yes.
Okay, do you wanna take some, some questions first, or do you look at the wastewater management plan? And, and I don't know if, if this is the right board for this, or if it's the, the.
Is it more the Board of Health?
Board of Health or, or the, um, Water Department?
So, it was in response to Jim Philbrook's comments, and he responded to those, and Dan Kurtz wanted to scroll over what you provided in that respect.
So, um, I believe the document that, uh, that you have in front of you, uh, was drafted by Dr. Curtis. Um, he's worked in wastewater, um, for over twenty years. Um, he's, he's a, a professional engineer in the state of Massachusetts, which was requested by, um, by, uh, Mr. Philbrook. Um, I believe he addressed all of the concerns related to cannabis waste, um, going down the sewer. Um, he identified that, um, sanitary waste would be treated as sanitary waste, sent down the sewer, that processed waste, um, would, would not be going down the drain. And if there were any, uh, if there was a kitchen component to the facility, that traditional grease traps, um, that you would see in a restaurant would be used to capture oils and, um, and components that it might be, um, um, generated in the, in, in the lab or kitchen. So, um, I believe he's addressed all of the issues. Um, we would be complying with the, the state cannabis laws on the use of, of sewer for, for wastewater discharge. And, um, I, I believe, uh, he's addressed the questions, um, by Mr. Philbrook, um, which was communicated to me that those were, those were concerns that were brought to him. Um, and, and I think that, uh, what, what he's presented complies, um, with local and state law.
Okay.
Um, did you have any comments in response to, to the, to?
I just came in a couple of days ago, I believe, so I don't know what he said to him, to review it. We can certainly ask him for his feedback on this, if you like.
Okay, so we've got this for the, for the wa- wastewater, and then we've got the, the engineering report for the odor, which should satisfy both, both of his requirements.
Right.
Once, once again, we can condition the site plan approval for those, those documents, and, and he signs out.
So, we'll take some questions from the public. It's a little small crowd. Um, do we have, do we have some questions?
Yes, Madam Chairman, um, my name is Ed Kochling, I live at forty-seven Leeson Road. Um, has the bo- has the board considered, uh, any type of backup plan in case things go, go wrong here? So, for example, um, every business can go out of business, and if this particular establishment went out of business, what would happen? Who would maintain, you know, the, the odor systems? You know, how, how would all that work?
Well, I think.
So, so, so I guess what, what I'm advocating for, or what I, which, or what I would, uh, like the board to consider is possibly having an odor bond for this project or any other project, you know, dealing with an odor issue in town.
Well, I would think that if the building went, if the business went out of business, like you said, you wouldn't have an odor problem anymore because there wouldn't be any cannabis left in the building or.
Well, that's not true, 'cause you, you have, you have twenty, this is a twenty thousand square foot building, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so, so you would have, you know, all of a sudden, things go wrong, things don't get upcap, there's, there's, uh, you know, problems start occurring. And I'm looking from the, from our previous meetings on, on marijuana, uh, facilities, it was very obvious from the Board of Health's comments that the current, um, town bylaws and the fines that they can levy support are pretty miniscule and, and don't really, uh, aren't, aren't effective. And so, you know, my past experience with any kind of business is, is you need a backup plan. And, uh, typically, uh, some sort of, you know, bond mechanism, whether, and I would recommend like a letter of credit bond, something say fifty cents per square foot of grow, you know, because we're gonna, you know, there's different sized facilities, that kinda thing. In this particular case, that would give you a ten thousand dollar cushion in case something went wrong. Or you could hire, uh, an expert to come in, or you could, uh, uh, have a company come in to, to, to fix systems, that kinda thing. To me, that would be a, a very important aspect of this, and you could write it into your, your, your order, you know, your order of conditions or your contract with them, and s- basically set that standard for the town.
Interesting, so we do that for, um, solar fields, um. Decommissioning bonds. Decommissioning bonds, we, uh, are there any other bi- what else?
So, so t- typically, what I've seen in the industry for construction or building, conservation, for example, you can have a conservation bond. So if there's a, a, a large replication area on a project, you can, you know, the conservation committee can ask for a bond. So that if, if something, if everything goes wrong, it doesn't get done, they can come in with that money, use that money to clean it up. Same thing, for example, the city of Worcester has for the road, for the road board. There's a five thousand dollar cash bond that a contractor has to have on account. And if there's a problem with the road patches they did, um, and they get a call, they don't come back and fix it in a timely manner within a day or two, the city has a special contractor comes in and does it, the bond gets released to them, and it has worked extremely successful. In fact, a, a lot of cities across the state have adopted the city of Worcester system. So that's, I just wanna put that out there because, I mean, you know, at the start of all these kinda projects, everything sounds good, and we're gonna do all these things, and, and, you know, everything works. But what we really need to be focusing on is the things that can go wrong, uh, that are gonna sort of take us by surprise and, and cause a problem down the road. And one of the most important parts of businesses, anybody knows, is, is having a backup plan, having cash reserve to address those problems, I think would be very, very prudent.
Interesting, what does the board think?
I might, if I might just jump in quickly. Um, so we're required, uh, by state regulations to have, uh, a winding down bond, um, or escrow account in place. It's part of the, the state regulatory regime. Um, uh, in, in most instances, it's five thousand dollars, so we will have a winding down bond or escrow account in place.
Who holds that?
Um, you know, so bonding is a, is a little tricky because this is the cannabis industry, and, uh, uh, we're not federally legal at this point, so it, it can be difficult to find companies that will service. Um, so there are a few companies out there, I don't know the names off the top of my head, but we've certainly referred plenty of clients to other groups. You can also put, simply put five thousand dollars in an escrow account, um, at.
Mm, escrow's good.
At your bank that, um, that will service you, and I think most folks have gone that route. Um, so, you know, certainly, it's a requirement by the state, and I, and so, our facility is twenty thousand square feet, but, uh, we only have ten thousand square feet of canopy space. Um, so that would be right in line with the, uh, public suggestion here.
Interesting, so you're the cannabis control? No, oh, you, oh, you're not, I can, oh, you're.
Advisor.
Advisor.
I'm sorry, that's what I meant. Um, is that something that you guys talk about?
We haven't, not yet.
Um, because that's interesting.
They don't really have any jurisdictions, per se, to, uh, impose anything.
But you'd suggest things for the town.
Uh, this is where it should come, it should come to here.
I mean, if it's something, I mean, if it's, if it's already required, does the state have to? So you have to have it in place, is that something, if the town held that bond for you, if you had a, a five thousand dollar cash bond and the town held it for you, is that gonna satisfy your requirements for the state also? I'm just, I'm saying.
It's a good question, I, I don't know. Um, I believe that the law firms can hold it. I believe you can put it in a separate account, or you can have, uh, a bonding agency, uh, get, get you a, a bond. Um, I don't know if the town could hold it, I'd have to look.
That's a very, that's interesting, right, that's very, an interesting question.
I think we could hold it, there wouldn't be any reason why we can't.
What, what, what I would suggest is it would be a letter of credit, okay, so the bank actually holds it.
That, it's a little difficult to.
I don't know, is that even, is that even possible with the, with the cannabis industry?
Correct.
That's not, it's not, because the financial climate of this industry.
No. That's correct.
However, I, I don't, you know, I think that the.
However, I don't, you know, I think that the mechanism already exists. And I think that, you know, we would be willing to, you know, with our financial institution, that we are able to do business with, hold an escrow account. So I don't think it's an unreasonable ask. It's certainly a valid concern.
It's not a huge amount either.
I think it's, I think it's already been accounted for and-
We're doing it anyway.
We'd be happy, we'd be happy to make that information available to the municipality.
Give the board evidence of our bonding. I mean, it's required for our state application, so we'll be happy to provide it.
May the town eligible to access those funds too?
Yeah, you know, I can't say that we could do that, only because I don't know what kind of restrictions the state's looking for. I mean, it's designed, it's designed for this exact purpose. I mean, it is deemed their winding down fund.
The state is very slow at doing things though. If there was a major problem and we needed to pull that money, it may take a considerable amount-
It's not held by the state, so it's held through our company.
But our legal access to get that might be, if, you know, and worst case scenario, go out of business and leave half the inventory there, and I'm being, you know, worst case scenario. And now it stinks, and now we're kind of in the middle of something.
And the town takes that over?
Still have a line at the door for that.
It's a slippery slope.
Yeah, I don't, so, you know, we actually, you know, there's very strict requirements even as to landlords and their rights to recapture. So we have to specifically exclude, if we fall behind on the rent and the landlord wants to evict us, we, they have to go, you know, we have to get special permission to remove the product and dispose of it per state standards. The landlord can't even come in and take the product because they're not authorized to manage cannabis. You have to be licensed to hold it, to produce it, to store it. So it's really, it's sort of-
So how do we hold that bond and how do we have access to that?
I mean, we, I mean, like, we normally bond like a cell tower. Normally, a bond goes right to our treasurer, and we just hold it. So is it, is it that huge of a deal if, if, if we can't, if we put in a condition that said, we want a ten thousand bond sitting at our, in our, is that an idea, is that going to-
I think we would ask that it be commensurate with the state's requirements at five thousand. And then, you know, certainly, I don't anticipate that being an issue at all.
So my thought on this was, that was just one case scenario, going out of business. It's really, my big concern is odor issues. The industry hasn't been here long enough for us to really understand how every place is gonna shake out and like the design here hasn't been completed, you know what I mean? There's a lot to it.
I agree.
Just a reminder that we are in the industrial general district. We're bordered by industrial buildings. There's two residences, and they're just adjacent to our building. We're both in support of our project. They've attended a number of meetings, including the community meeting that we just held on Monday night. So we don't have really any pushback on this particular project, given its location in an industrial district.
I think that we should make the state calculation our condition, and they have to also hold that amount. If the state came, if all the professionals in the state came up with a specific number, let's use that number and use that as a condition and make that, set a precedent in going forward for anything else cannabis related, we make sure that we-
Yes, and they do have to do it, exactly.
So, Madam Chairman, what I would recommend that you do is put a condition in paperwork here that explains or states what that bond can be taken for. You know what I mean? So you need to do a little bit of thought or thinking to put a line item in there that says, we can attach this bond, we can take this bond if there's an odor condition problem, blah, blah, blah. You know, so then it's specific, we just can't take it because they have a pothole in their parking lot. You know what I'm saying? So in that way, then it's fair for the company, but it's fair for us as well as a resident and as a town. And it sets a very good business precedent for the town.
My only concern was I'd be careful for that because if there was an issue with odor, we can't exactly go into their facility and start changing out filters on our own as the town. We, our rights are limited.
It's more of a punishment, right? It's more of that we will, it's, I mean, typically, I mean, I don't think we usually pull down those bonds. It's rare. It's in all my years, I think, did we once try, there was a legal, I mean, I, I just don't think, I think it's more of a little bit of a safety net in case something happened. And putting any limitation, I mean, what if they didn't replace some lights?
Kurt, before you run away, if there was a reason that they became out of compliance with an odor issue or something like that, could the town cease and desist and tell them they need to stop production until they clear it up? That would be one thing the town has in their control to be able to do that.
So as you suggested earlier, that that seems to be a board of health issue. And I think there's probably a two-pronged approach to that. Is the board of health notification that they're violating a DEP requirement and a concurrent notification possibly to the Cannabis Control Commission? And I think maybe the Cannabis Control Commission has the bigger stick.
That's absolutely right. If we fall out of compliance, we'll lose our license at the state level and then we'll be done.
So the question, I think, of any of this is, as a good business, they wanna be proactive and not have us get to that point. And sort of my question was, is how do we tell, you know, who says it smells? Because my perception of smell is opposed to somebody else, and it's sort of like that thing we have in the trade. It says a neat and workmanlike manner. I have yet to find a real definition for neat and workmanlike manner except that what any other person in the trade would do.
But that comes in handy once in a while.
And also, as a reminder, there's the three percent community impact payment that we'll be making based on our gross sales. So, you know, the business is making contributions through its community impact fee directly to the town, which certainly, you know, those fees are supposed to be reasonably related to the impacts the facility is, has on the community. And so if there were odor issues or issued complaints, certainly, there would, you know, there's an opportunity for funds to be applied in that sense as well.
I still think the bond's a good idea and is a good precedent to set. Plus, it's not a huge amount of money. It's a small, that's gonna sit there and collect interest for you. You know, it's not gonna be a huge-
That's right, and, you know, typically, so I've worked a lot in telecom industry as well. You know, you see it, you see it when they're building the towers, and they may do like a double construction bond and, you know, maybe a landscaping bond in case they don't live up to the standards of detailing the road or, you know, putting in the appropriate buffers. I mean, you know, in this project, we don't have any of those concerns because we're redoing an existing, the interior of an existing building. So the footprint is exactly the same. We're not adding any landscape. But certainly, we're happy to do so, so thank you.
I would just finish by saying that I'm pretty sure the town of Sterling would love to have a bond in place right now because they have serious odor conditions with their marijuana facility where it's impacting a daycare, I guess, or a gymnasium, function area. And if they had money to draw on immediately to get an expert in there and get the ball rolling, to get things straightened out, I, you know, I guarantee you, they wish they had that.
I think that that was a good idea. I think that we should set a precedent and do that for everybody.
Very good. Thank you very much. I appreciate your time and your service.
But we may not have control of it, and this will have control of, and we'll probably never have to use it, and it makes everybody feel a little more comfortable. And it's a new industry, and we're all learning, so-
Yeah, absolutely.
And all the money to be made in marijuana, a little bond isn't gonna hurt anybody.
And use the same standards as, I'm sorry, use the same standard as the state.
Right, okay.
Marion Smith, one thirty-six Dresser Hill Road. So I just wanted two comments. One was to disagree with the remark that was made that the three percent community impact fee should be applied to address odor concerns. I think the odor concern should be taken care of by the business, and the community impact fee is intended to pay for public safety and other fire and other sidewalks and other things that are needed by the town in order to address the business.
I agree.
Thank you. My other comment is about wastewater. I think at the Board of Health meeting the other night, it was unclear whether or not this property is tied into a sewer system and is there any monitoring of the water leaving the property? And where is that water going? It wasn't clear, so I wonder if there's clarification about that.
So there is, there's a letter from their engineer that specifically talks to those points. We, the building currently is fed for a while, and I believe is serviced by sewer. So our intent is to use that. You can see how we laid out the points that were addressed to the Board of Health. For sanitary systems only and no more domestic uses.
So you're gonna propose some type of treatment, so, system for the-
As required, typically, typically, we characterize the wastewater with the treatment facility. They analyze the results. We work with them to treat if necessary. Typically, these facilities, the discharge from agricultural use is well within the capacity of the facility to handle that. If the facility is currently over the capacity, then we would be required by the facility to pre-treat before it goes into the sewer.
With water and sewer, right?
So we've discussed the application, we know what we need to do. And so, you know, additionally, we'll be bringing public water to the building so that we would have, there's a well on site. We would like to also have public water supplying the building. Currently, there's a twenty thousand gallon tank in the back of the building that supports the fire suppression system. We take life safety very seriously and would connect directly to the public water system to support that system.
So will the system stay as a backup, or would you-
No, we would, we would, we would charge the system with public water supply. And we would then have a backup water source on-
Has anybody, does, do you know what type of service do you have coming in for your sewer? What size pipe?
Currently, we've not addressed it, but we assume that based on the discharge, which would be several thousand gallons, somewhere around five thousand gallons a day, that what exists would probably suffice. But if we see that it needs to be changed, we would-
I mean, they would think it was only an auto park server before which-
Right.
Probably didn't-
Twenty or so employees at fifteen gallons a day are talking several hundred gallons a day. So, you know, the way these facilities are fed is through a slow trickle of water to the plant. So it's never being overburdened. And, you know, the collective discharge of the facility is over a longer period of time. So it's not like water's rushing out of the facility, you know?
Do we, do we get any sort of comment from water?
I was just looking. I don't see you can do it now, so.
I believe Peter came in and we had a quick discussion about that, but- And that they do, that they do test to make sure that-
They test frequently, and if they see a problem, then they try to figure out where it's coming from. And if it's a new problem-
I think in this specific case, that they test your specific wastes, right, to see if it can be handled. Is it, correct me if I'm wrong, it's also state regulated, the wastewater.
That's right.
I can't, I, you know, I'm just getting old. I swear I had a conversation with Peter, but I'm surprised we don't have a memo from that.
I'll double check and let you know.
I thought we did, but I-
If not, I'll get back to him.
So I'm sorry if I missed it, but could we clarify that the facility is gonna be discharging wastewater at several thousand gallons per day? What does several mean? Is that tens of thousands?
Around five thousand gallons a day.
Five thousand, thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't hear that. And the other is what kinds of solvents are used in the extraction process? What specifically are the solvents?
So currently, what's, you know, what's used in the industry would be CO2, ethanol, or butane. Those systems are all closed loop, so they're self-contained. None of those solvents are discharged into sinks or drains. Up to ninety percent of that solvent is recovered through another piece of equipment. And the remainder of the spent product that is extracted, the plant material after the solvent's gone through that, it's left to sit for those, for those solvents to evaporate. So none of this stuff is ever poured down the drain.
Maybe that's the sludge that remains, right, that you're talking about that?
You said previously, you can have a just very limited amount of compost coming out of the building. That would be part of that material also?
Right. Which all go into locked waste container picked up on a weekly basis.
And does the evaporation process require ventilation?
It does, you know, for life safety. So people wear, you know, in the space, the systems that will be specified for air handling would handle any evaporation.
Meaning like a hood?
Yep.
Having worked in a lab, so meaning a hood that would pull that out? And then is that filtered? Does that just go?
It's, so, so there's classification on exhaust that is required in extraction spaces depending on the solvent and the amount of solvent in the room. It's a fire code classification, and so it's prescribed by local and state law.
Any additional questions?
I just have one. It's kind of off topic. You paid this fee to the town? Are you gonna just bring like gobs of money?
Cash.
How was it gonna pay this? I was very curious about that.
To build the facility?
No, 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 for the- You know, so interestingly, some of the taxes are paid in cash. I mean, we're fortunate in Massachusetts to have a couple of financial institutions that are servicing the, by a couple, I mean two, that are servicing the cannabis industry. So, you know, we'll be, we'll be signing up at those banks. I would expect it to come in the form of a check.
Or money transfers or something?
Money transfers, yeah, exactly.
Which ironically, all the other banks can't accept any type of funds that are taken from a marijuana facility. So it'll be interesting to see if the town also then has to open accounts at those said banks that they can accept your funds.
You're gonna go to Combe's?
Fortunately, fortunately, the safe act is looking like it's gonna be passed sometime soon by the federal government and then, and that will open up a lot of opportunities for the industry, which is great.
It's fun. Imagine.
Paper bags.
They're close to, so, um-
Not plastic.
Not plastic.
So continuation then?
So do we need a continuation or-
I was just gonna say that. I would wish it was conditioned.
Can we condition it? What do we need to continue it?
That's why we're glad you stayed, so we're talking about, I, just because there was, it's so clean, and we have so, I mean, and I think because we're, we're used to a lot worse than this, so this seems very bad. But things are put together. Mike seems, Mike's happy.
Mike's happy. Order's happy. They've done everything we asked them.
I mean, I know it's not perfected, but that's something that-
So then we can condition that we get the final specs when they come in, we get his approval for the building permit type of thing. We can condition that. So.
I would be very comfortable with that.
The bond, we want to make sure that there's a, and the odor maintenance plan that you're, that you think is reasonable, that you, that you sign off. That, is that okay?
Just for wording, like best management practices plan.
You know, you know what you're talking about, we don't, so as long as it sounds, you know, as long as you're good, that makes sense.
Bill, do we have a list of possible conditions at this point, even scribbling down? Or have you been taking notes as we've been talking?
No, I don't have a list.
Okay, so, so, looking at, so the bond, the odor, or-
The odor, the-
Best management practices.
Best management practices.
Approved before a building permit is signed off.
Yes.
There should be, the, in operational procedures written, again, you are, they already have to do it for the state, but I think that's something that we wanna have, we want, should we have, do we have that too?
We should be, or somebody should be able to go in and look at their maintenance plan to make sure that filters are being changed as required. And if there is a, we need a, at least notice on who the complaints go to, who handles the complaints.
Which will be in that, in your plan.
Would you do the one on plan?
That's right.
The operations plan, yeah.
Um, um.
I think that's pretty much covered it.
Again, was there anything else in there that?
Does it have more?
Board of Health, um, response to their.
Order of health response to this, to this.
Water Health sign off, water and sewer sign off?
Yep.
I think that, I mean, you've covered all the bases, money, sewer, water, odor.
No, that's not.
No, they're in industrial zone.
And again, water and sewer, if they're, if they're happy with their plan and the waste, then that's, um.
Well, they could always, if they weren't happy, they could just shut them off and say, we're not accepting any waste.
But it's better to be pre, pre happy, it's better to be, you know, sign off on it and then.
And compliance with treaties.
Yeah, they would get the plan prior to sign off on final, final inspections for the building permit, as, as long as it's approved and you feel it's gonna be okay.
Do we have, did we miss any conditions, audience, because that was all, that was your job now? Anything else that you think that we missed?
Can I make a motion, we close the public hearing?
Second.
All in favor?
I am. I would make a motion that we accept four scores planned with the conditions as read.
I'll, I'll second it.
Do we put in our standards?
I guess we don't need John to vote, we have four voting members already even without John Zek, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So, I'll, I'll second and.
But we have a special permit, so why?
It is a special permit, so you need four votes, so you don't.
Why can't John vote too?
Yeah, only if you don't have enough other members to make a form.
Bummer.
So, you, everyone was at the other hearings or have seen a, a copy of the hearing?
Yes.
Okay, good.
Um, so, we've got a motion and a second to, to accept, is there any other discussion to, we have?
Good, I think we have good conditions.
We've got the list of those conditions. Okay.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations, Justin.
Thank you.
Thank you guys very, very much.
Good luck.
Appreciate it, thank you.
And, uh, someday we'll see you back for the retail part, right?
That's right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for your work, thank you for your efforts. What else do we do?
Well, now we.
We have other.
Yeah, we have one more. Jay didn't stay all this time.
He doesn't love us that much.
Yeah.
He just loves marijuana, that's why he stayed.
The preliminary subdivision plan for both coming back. This is solar number twenty. We're at twenty-nine, right, we're at twenty-nine.
Thirty.
We're at thirty, this is number thirty?
Yeah. I don't even try anymore.
Do we have any, any, anything that we need to have for the?
No, this doesn't require.
Oh, just a preliminary, okay.
It's just a preliminary plan.
So, this is Brookfield Road right along the highway?
Do you want me to go ask the hallway to be quiet?
We can just close the door, it's unlocked, so. Okay, because it's unlocked and they can come in if they want to.
It's funny, I think the toilet's an unsettled about leaving that door open, it's weird thing, I don't know why.
Well, that was addressed in some open meeting, as long as it's not locked, people, people know it's happening.
So, we have Matthias, I forget your last name.
Dean Cartinter.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's my last name.
Oh, okay. And, and Jason.
Please present away.
All right, um, Jason DeWort from DC Engineering Survey. Property is seventy-five Brookfield Road, Infinity Solar. We do oppose preliminary subdivision plan in front of you here. So, the property, uh, Brookfield Road runs through here, is the Mass Pike and property is basically a budding a Mass Pike on the, um, western side of Brookfield Road. We are in a agricultural zone.
Also, our forty and a lot of Brookfield Road.
Yeah, where is actually the zone lining? Yeah, so.
It's a split, split.
Okay, yeah, so our forty comes down through here.
Yes.
This portion of it is agricultural.
Right.
Um, I know the board's seen quite a few of these recently, uh, so it's a two lot subdivision. The roadway comes in through here, it's about a hundred and twenty feet long, uh, twenty foot in gravel, roadway with a twenty by eighty turnaround at the end. Uh, sixty foot radius of the ball of cul-de-sac. Basically, we blocked one is this area here, it's twenty-four, almost twenty-five acres. Does have the two-third minimum upland requirement. And lot two is on this side, property line come directly off the cul-de-sac here. We have triangular lot like this, uh, just over six acres, also with the, the minimum two-third or exceeding the two-third upland requirement. Uh, the roadway is a two percent grade in for the first seventy-five feet or so and then eight percent remaining, remaining half the roadway. We do have some, uh, some grating around the back of the roadway that swells down into a sediment trap. Uh, so no runoff would enter, enter Brookfield Road. Is any questions at this point?
Purpose, how was gotten the plan? Is it usually, usually the purpose is on?
Right, that's a good point, yeah, we could ask for the, for the showing of the plan.
Isn't that just on the A and R plan, the purpose?
Um, well.
Do we usually have?
Subdivision plan too, I think it's.
I think, yeah, I think it's reasonable to re, require that.
Yeah, I mean, I normally, we normally see them even on the preliminary subdivision.
This is eventually gonna be followed up with a definitive plan or?
It, uh, yes, yes, this is the purpose of the, well, a preliminary plan must be followed up by a definitive plan or it doesn't have any understanding.
Yeah, within eight months, seven, seven months.
Seven, well, seven, well, seven months for the zoning freeze protection, if any.
Okay.
Oh, is this just to get it in before that, before this solar change?
Yeah.
Right.
Which we would probably follow many of those standards are, are already.
I mean, I think Matthias said the purpose of the plan is to help gain protection from the zoning change.
Yes.
So, um, I don't know if we wanna send it, if, if we wanna make that put on here, but I, I think it should be.
Still just a preliminary that, that I think for the definitive will require it.
I mean, for the record, to be, we have it now for the market, but those, these, these little things, we need to always pay attention to it.
Has, has Graves looked at this at all or?
No.
Only a preliminary, so it's about, you know, is it reasonable, does it meet the, the, the basic requirements and.
Right.
As long as it's not drawn by a nine-year-old, we're pretty.
No, I mean, the lots are, you know, exceeds frontage area and all that stuff.
Can you discuss, when you talked about power line and, is actually, what permission to put the road in under that?
That's a preliminary, there's a power line?
That's power line, yes.
Right, right on the, okay, I was, I was gonna ask him what that was.
We're waiting on final approval for a, uh, for easement access from, uh, the utility to operate underneath the power line.
What's that process? Do they, they give you an easement for it or?
Oh, it's quite complicated, I've been working on it for like six months. Many drawings have been involved. And it's gone through four different departments so far to get multiple stamps of approval and such.
Not to be a bug, but I've never seen a cul-de-sac built underneath, I know it's not what you're building or, but underneath a high tension line, you'd never put a cul-de-sac in.
That's why they're getting approval.
Yeah. No, but.
I know.
Typically, typically, we, I mean, we've had issues with other developments that tried to do something, we've raised issue with it. I mean, it just. I mean, is that the only place to go with that?
Some people work from.
Well, well, this is, this is all wetland here, that's, this is wetland here, so it's, this is the only upland, that's the only access really through there.
I mean, could you just extend it to get that cul-de-sac out of there, I mean?
It could go longer, but I'd mean the roadway would still be under it, so I don't know if that would.
The roadway is fine, but, but.
Just not there all the time.
Just think if you ever were gonna build anything, we're playing pretend again. But if you're going to build something eventually there, you put two house or houses, which you have, the high tension lines going, going through the cul-de-sac where the kids are gonna play, but. It just.
I never really thought of it.
I also don't think it's a requirement, so.
Yeah, I mean.
The subdivision plan itself.
Yeah, I mean, I, driveway's gonna come off, you know, the lot's gonna be up and, I mean, the roadway or the cul-de-sac is.
The driveway's probably gonna be wait where the cul-de-sac is, is that where it's gonna be?
Yeah, the driveway would, you know, come off the side and then come off the backside into this, into this property.
I guess no matter where they enter, they're gonna have to, to get to the salt, they're gonna have to go under the high tensions anyways.
It's gonna be under it, yeah.
And they can't do anything unless they get the easement, so, I mean, it's.
Right, if they don't grant an easement, nothing happens, right?
Right.
So, is that something, is that easement necessary for us to accept this plan or, or is it?
Is it kind of at annual risk?
Is it at this point, is it incomplete?
Yeah, I think it would be, I, I mean, you're proving the preliminary subdivision, but it was left to go to definitive.
I think it's a definitive plan.
And this is the preliminary, and this, I mean, they get, wake up, this is to freeze the zoning.
Oh, yeah.
That's all.
Before the, the, the new solar changes happen.
And even if the definitive was approved, if National Grid didn't give you, it wouldn't be able to be built.
Right.
So, it's that, it's one of those things at annual risk.
So, you're presuming.
I don't think it's any risk to us, I mean, whether they, whether they approve or disapprove, it.
Correct.
It doesn't make a difference to us unless anybody feels uncomfortable with this.
No. Better off.
Not at this stage.
Yeah. Exactly, exactly.
So, I mean, okay, make a motion, we accept the preliminary plan for.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
See you within the, see you within the next seven months?
Thank you guys very much.
Sorry you had to wait so long, but it was entertaining, right?
Believe me, I've been in a lot of different towns and I've heard that conversation a lot of different times.
Same conversation?
Oh, yeah, oh, yeah.
Jason has, uh.
And at least you guys got the independent reviewer in on the odor stuff quickly, uh, that, I mean, that, you guys did that earlier on.
We're seasoned.
That's, um, but no, I've heard that.
We're not consulting for other towns.
Uh, Jason brought the mile out in for the Mitchell McHughville subdivision. Uh, the twenty-day appeal period has expired without, um, appeal, so you could maybe sign these later or sign them now if you and Jason could pick them up tomorrow.
I can go back tomorrow, I'm doing a. I can.
Okay, so, before you leave tonight, do you have to sign?
No, wait, that's a bad time.
You and me both.
So, do the sheets would you sign?
Okay, we can, sorry, you will come either after or you.
Deb's having a boring night too, this, nothing. This isn't gonna sell any papers.
Four scores, good. Yeah.
Okay.
That's good, that's a highlight for me.
Pick a good, pick a, pick a good headline.
Do you guys all have my contact info? Does anyone need a card or anything?
I do.
I do.
Sometimes I walk out without double checking.
Thank you.
I have one, right?
Yes, I think I've given you four.
Not that he's counting right. He wants to bet a good budget, right, the budget.
Laminate it, please. Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
Do we have time to discuss the zoning amendments or?
Do we wanna try to get through one, do we wanna get through, is there?
Well, you know, you can talk about them if you like, it's for your information, uh, the public hearing is scheduled for April seventeenth.
Yep. Does everybody look them over?
So, the energy one looks pretty, um, it's, it's a half a page, we can get through that, we get it off of our checklist.
The energy, energy storage one?
Uh, you can't make, you know, any changes to these tonight, but that would be for the copper ceiling, thirty minutes.
Yeah.
Oh, so we don't, oh, we don't, oh, we're not scheduled for the public hearing?
Before we do that, do we, can we discuss the, um, the, the rainforeland issues?
Oh, yes, let's, let's, you're right, let's.
Is that, is that on the agenda, is that?
Yes, it is.
It was, yes, it, no, it was, uh, clear.
Let's save these for the public hearing, I think it's safe.
I do have one question on one of them, but we can skip rainforeland and then we can have the.
Rainforeland's really, really bad, I think that we should, um, force them to put a fence up to, to satisfy the fact that they should cut down all those trees and then plant some big trees.
Did, did they cut down all the trees or did they just cut up two of the vents?
All, cleared it right off.
So, it's.
The fence is on the road anyway.
There's a few along the road on the other side of the fence.
There's a buckle on the other side of the fence, right.
Correct.
Is that, was that not part of the plan? So, I'm looking at the plan right now.
We're supposed to leave all, pretty much a big piece of that, they just kinda.
I will say that those guys are there about six o'clock every morning, because they're there before weaving gets there.
This is, this is the natural green buffer that was to be mean, this is, this is what's still here.
Right, and this is what they did.
This was, it says brush and trees cut to fence line. And I wasn't sure, it, it, that's what's there now or that's what was on the plan?
What was, in red is what was intended to remain and was shown on the plan.
So, all that red stuff is what, it should have been there and it got all cut down.
Yeah.
Um, so, quick fix, I think they should put up a, a vinyl fence, like they have the rest of the property matched, um, because this is a pretty big mistake and this is a very sensitive project and, um.
I would like to have a committee to talk to you.
I think that's a great idea.
Why would you even do that?
Mistake, not.
I honestly think it was a mistake because based on the fact of how quickly they're trying to get up because they were held back from the, because it went through the appeals court, um, I see that there's a big sign up there that Masialo's doing it and I just think that there might have been a miscommunication between the parties as to what it was supposed to do, they might have been told, you're supposed to clear the whole thing.
They were told to clear it.
Yes, exactly, that's one.
I mean, there is no doubt in my mind, they were told to clear.
They had added.
So, they did exactly what they were supposed to.
So, my problem is, is that we don't have time to get them in soon.
Right.
So, we will be lucky if we get them for our first May meeting, right? Um, because next, next meeting is going to be swamped.
Yes.
Now, I don't, I, I think they need to fix it immediately and I think they should come in and talk to us, but I think they should also, we should send a letter and say.
Well, I, I, I disagree only in that I think they need to fix it, I think it needs to be fixed soon, but I think that while they're still in the construction phase, I don't think that there's this urgency because they're still constructing. There's bulldozers there every day, there's all these blood people, the damage is done, they're not gonna undo it.
Right, but you don't want any more damage, right?
No, no, and I agree with you, but they've, I mean, it, it's done, it's clear, I think at this point.
I mean, we could ask Kurt to stop, stop everything until you come talk to us, because, and, and then no one will ever do it again, so.
We could, we could.
Well, I think, yes, but I think at this point, they're going to be constructing further into the project. So, they've, they've cleared it, it's gone, let them keep constructing, bring them in in May, make, have them talk to us and then have them put that fence up, because I don't think they're going to do any more harm. Um, and I think derailing their project again, and not that we did it, but I, I don't know that it's.
I mean, it wasn't us, we, we approved everything, wasn't it?
Correct, correct.
But I, I think that we have to always be careful, we talk about set in precedent.
Yes.
Now, oops, mistake, but this is a pretty big mistake.
It is, but I think that.
And it affects, and it, and there's residences there that now will be.
It does.
So, what would you rather see, would you rather see a fence or would you rather see, uh, plantings in a design that obscures that parking lot completely?
I think that in the. I think the fence is gonna be more attractive.
I think that in the meantime, in the meantime, they need a fence, but they can make, I don't care, they can plant new trees,
Do you think, okay, okay.
but I think now they have to fix it and if they plant some trees, it's gonna take forever to, for them, you know, I mean.
We were allowing them to leave the trees there as a cost, as a way to mitigate, mitigate their cost and not bring the fence all the way around. Now that the trees are gone, a fence is a no-brainer because now they have to do it. So, they've kind of chopped their nose off despite their faces, mistake or not, they're gonna spend more money on that fence, but I think long-term, a fence is actually going to be better because trees can die, trees can fall over.
Sure.
You have to wa, if they put plantings up, now those have to be maintained, they're putting up a brown vinyl fence, a tall, uh, brown vinyl fence that will have to.
But that won't be to the very end of the project either, but I, I think they should stop until they see us.
So, what happens, what happens when they start using that property that they've cleared now? Now they're, now they've got usable property all the way up to that fence line.
Exactly.
I still don't think that's, that can be usable.
They need to be told they cannot do that.
No, they still have a site plan they have to live with.
They still have a site plan that says you cannot, you can't park the trucks there, you can't, you can't.
I think they still should hold their plant. Because they can't, I think they should, they should replace the trees.
Put a fence and then do some plantings in that area and some landscaping.
Yep.
My only concern with the trees would be make sure that the root system, when they're at maturity. My only concern with the trees would be make sure that the root system, when they're at maturity, doesn't interfere with the fence, so you want, and to make sure that you are.
But, 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 I think that most, most, um.
That would take thirty, forty years for that.
Well, you know, if you like.
And they'll have to replace the fence anyways in my time.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
We can have them submit a remediation plan.
Sure, sure, then we can look at it, and tell them whether we think it's sufficient or not.
Okay.
I, 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 I mean, personally, I'd like them to stop until they see us, I think we, can we, can we, um, act, what do we do, do we send a letter to Kurt to say?
I would say, yeah, I think that would have to go to Kurt.
Well, that'd be, that'd be a hardship, though, I think, for them to set the sat for more, uh, before they can continue.
That's my problem, right. During prime building season, yeah.
Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm okay with letting, continues, but they're not opening until they fix us.
Can they come in, can, until, but if, but if they come in and just meet with Bill, or they come in and meet with one of us?
Maybe submit a letter.
Yes.
Admitting they did wrong, and, and what they're gonna do to fix it.
Yes, and what they're gonna do to fix it. Yes.
Um, but, as far as I'm concerned, I mean, they can continue on, but they're not opening up until that, that satisfies, you know, uh, there's, there's remediation.
Right.
And just because it's clear doesn't mean they can build up to it.
Correct.
Yep, that's.
Right, they still follow their site plan.
So, what's gonna, so, so what now, so what if they keep on going and they move along, and eventually we send them a letter and they say, alright, we can come in on this date, and they just say, they, they just don't put the fence?
And then they don't get an occupancy permit, and they can't open the apartment.
But wasn't.
That's correct.
Yeah, they, they don't, they don't, they, they don't follow their site plan, and they're done, yeah.
That's right.
But, 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 but it's not a condition or anything.
Well, they broke a condition, so now they have to do the remediation plan, and they don't get an occupancy permit unless they follow the remediation plan. I mean, there are rules in place, and Kurt can't shut them down as evidenced by another business.
So, they're in violation of their site plans, so until they satisfy that, they can't get an occupancy permit.
Exactly.
So, so, we'll, so let's send, um, a memo to Kurt and have it flagged that they, they don't.
Right. We need a remediation plan.
They don't get like a pre-occupancy or anything like that before the fence is built, you know, they.
Or a temporary, the temporary, it's been.
No, no. No temporary anything until that fence is up.
Or, not, it's not just the fence, they, they.
And remediated.
And in, in their trees, they want, and their, and their remediation plan.
Remediated. It has to be some sort of planning design.
I would like something in writing now, saying that they are not gonna build up to the land that's clear.
That, that's my worry now, is that they're gonna start parking, trucks, trucks right against, they're gonna park their twelve-foot-high trucks against their six-foot-high fence, which.
Right. Right. Yep, right there. So, we wanna get them in as soon as possible, first meeting in May, so, but invite them in, um.
Sure. You know, because tho, those trees were a lot higher than six feet.
Yes, yes.
Absolutely.
So, that was one of the things that we, we wanted the trees there, because you can see the trucks over the fence, you couldn't see the trucks over the trees.
They should replace the trees at that height.
And I sound like, I, I, I know I sound sensitive about this, but we had a lot of questions as to whether they belonged up there or not, and we, we let it happen, and they should have had a little bit of, a little, they should have been a little sensitive to this stuff and not let it happen, so I wanna make sure that, that every tree, every piece that was taken out to the very centimeter where they took out trees, I want those trees back.
And those trees have to be of sufficient height just to shield their, their backyard from.
Yes, yes.
Now, not ten years from now.
And the problem is, those, right, those butters were already, unfortunately, they had that solar array where they have those trees that are just awful, that they're wilting, they're dying,
Before they open.
Yeah.
So, they were promised all this coverage, and they've got none of it, and now rainforet goes in, we promised them that this won't be anything like that solar array, and it's exactly the same. So, I agree that the trees should mimic what they were, we should give them what the project we promised them.
Is there anything we can do with that solar array to, to, to get better plantings in there and, and better?
I thought they replaced some of those, yeah, did they get?
I drove by there today, and maybe I just didn't notice, but it didn't look all that, it didn't look all the.
Okay.
It's not obscured at all.
No.
No, they were using small trees, but before, like, every other one died, yes.
They put some new trees in. But, but the whole is for brown trees, but, I, I mean, those were dead trees. No, no, I, I know, but they were, yeah, they were like.
Those are the cheap ones.
So, know what that is, that is a tree, because I run into this daily, so that is a tree, it's called, uh, some type of, uh, arborvitae, cheapest tree available,
Mm-hmm.
and their grow season, their grow distance barely makes it into Massachusetts, because everybody spec, specs them on their plants, because they're cheap, you can put them in. But it's questionable if they will survive a winter, because they're not that tall, they're, the top of their ra, grow range is probably Rhode Island, it's not. And a lot of the reputable, uh, nurseries around this, these parts do not sell them, because they know they're not, you, you, Big Lowes would not sell them, because, or they don't grow them, because.
Home Depot don't grow.
Well, of course, Home Depot does, because they're nationwide, and it's like, oh, we got it.
So, there's like that blueberry you buy there, and you never get blueberries.
It's funny, I drive by there all the time, and I, and I always, eh, like, they're, they're never, never better, um, I mean, I think we should, we'll have to, I'll pay more attention next year, maybe.
In the, uh, in the new silver bylaw, we require water bags for three years.
So, there are some arborvitae. And do we require, do we require a certain type of, of tree, too?
We can, we have standard, we have a standard list of trees planted.
We do.
So, there's a green giant arborvitae, that grows?
I think that's the one, I can look in one of the plants I've seen, there's one that, because I, because I buy them, and it's like, I can't buy this tree up here, because
Yeah.
no one's, no one's guaranteeing it for a year to live.
So, this is one that, that does grow in this area, okay, it's a green giant arborvitae, it grows to, I think, it maxes out at thirty feet, but you can top it at fifteen, and it grows like two feet a year, so you, you plant it, and within five years, it's the height you want it.
I mean, I see people all over town having these, these arborvitae that look, they, they're.
You just have to be careful about the, the species.
So, this is a species that's good here, my neighbor actually has it, he planted them, I think he bought them from Spags when they were this big, and now they're probably thirty feet high. So, they're, they're a good tree, they're solid for, for around here, and it, almost if you, if you plant them four feet apart, it's a hedge.
Yeah, they grow wide.
It's a, it's a hedge, and it's a tall hedge.
Will, will you hook up so that they're.
I'll look it up, I'll find it, and, and those are the kind of things that we need to spec around.
And, and they're rugged, and they, they'll take a drought, and they'll take a.
I know we have a, we have an approved tree list.
They'll take the winter, they'll, they'll handle our snow.
Where did that approved tree list come from? Because I know it's somewhere, there's an approved tree list that we have.
Subdivision regulations, I believe.
Is that, is that what's in there, where did they ever, do we know where that actually came from?
I don't.
Been there for a long time.
So, maybe, maybe we need, we have an approved, I think maybe when we're, when we're updating things, I know the bylaws are gonna come first, but we should maybe in our policies, do a little bit of research and see, just so we're, there's a, we, we set a standard and a precedent about what we expect.
Yeah, do a little bit more. A little bit more specific.
Right, I, and we'll, we'll add that to kind of our, our.
I'll, I'll, I'll do some research.
When we have a little time to come up, right, that makes sense, that way we can hand somebody the list.
Well, that, I mean, getting back to, and that's probably Bill's purview, too, but something that close to a road, you put a, put a berm up, put a berm up, so it, no one can see it, and then, we've done projects, and then they have a flag test, and the people come by and drive down the road.
Oh, interesting.
I, I, I think.
Yeah, yeah.
They're planted at the highest of the.
I don't think, I don't know, that arborvitae is part of it, it might just say arborvitae on it, that might, you know, we'll have to pull it out.
Component in there, you don't see it.
Yeah, I almost wanna say it came from him, but I'll, I'll pull it up.
It comes out.
That makes sense, I could, yeah, that makes absolute sense. Can I ask one question on the, um, zoning amendments that we are sponsoring, because I was asked today, and I did not have a good answer, and I, you can give me the Reader's Digest version, we can wrap up soon, because gosh knows, it is way past five, it's time for Wednesday.
We just, a few little things, but.
Absolutely. Why are we, as the planning board, sponsoring a complete ban on marijuana?
Because that, because last county, um, the Board of Selectmen voted to have a ban, they voted to send it to us, and then remember, we got it two days, two days or something?
Too late, yeah.
And there was an issue.
Yep.
So, out of appreciation for, um, for the Board of Selectmen, um, I thought that we'll, we'll sponsor it, because they voted to have it and let the residents decide.
Yeah, I'm okay with putting it in front of the residents and giving them an option, I, I don't think it'll pass, but.
I don't think it, I don't.
We'll give the, give the town an option, you know, if they've been asking, some people have been asking, enough people have been asking.
The bylaw being, the, the actual general bylaw passed, and then it got cut, shut down, but if this passes, then they can go back and do another general bylaw, because it'll agree, and just.
Yes.
But, but the, the problem with that is, it's a zoning bylaw, so anything that's already in, is already grandfathered in, and there's nothing you can do with, so it's, it's not gonna stop the industry.
Correct, right, can't change that.
Okay, that's what I, I guess I'm asking, so.
It's, it's really not gonna do much more than what we do now.
Our current, our current, well, what it will do is it will prevent any more cultivation, so right now, we.
But any cultivation that came in would have to go into an industrial park anyways.
Right, right, no, so what we'll do.
So, as long as, as long as the town is aware of what they're stopping, and where they're stopping.
Well, that's what I mean, so, like, four score just got approved, if this zoning bylaw gets passed, they're still going in, because they were grandfathered, much like solar.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, that's, I just wanted to be completely clear on it, I think, additional.
So, all, all it will do is it will prevent anybody else from coming in, everybody else is, is grandfathered.
Okay, thank you.
But it is a grow facility, if somebody else new comes in with a grow facility?
They can come in.
They can come in.
Yeah, we, because no.
Not if this passed.
Not if this passes, because this plan is all marijuana, like, everything.
Right, so right now, we have unlimited cultivation, and we have two medical and two retail, so if that came in, it would say, it would, what it would do, would, the residents would say, we don't want any more cultivation, we don't want anything else.
We don't want any more retail, we don't want any more medical, we don't want any more cultiv, if, if it, no pun intended, if it breathes of marijuana, it's not going any, okay, that's what I, but if it was, now, let's say that VGG passes in land court, let's say that they win their appeal.
Well, they're still in.
They're still in, because they were pre the, okay, just wanna, I just wanna be clear in case I get questions.
Yep.
There's also a companion, uh, ballot question, I talked to the town clerk today, so that will be part of the ballot.
Yep, so.
Is, there is one going in?
So, so this, this ballot going forward, I know there was a, a, a long, uh, Selectmen's meeting about that, and they decided to do the ballot first, so, so if, so we'll do the ballot,
Yes, submitted by the Selectmen.
and if the ballot passes, and then this passes, it is done, and if, if, if one of them doesn't pass, then it's out totally.
Yeah, when you say the ballot, I feel you're ignorant, what do you mean by ballot?
Yeah, yeah, we.
So, under the state law, because the town.
May fourth, may fourth.
May fourth, right.
May fourth, when you're going to vote for your, um, for Ross and Don, um, you can also vote to, to, for the, for the ban or not.
They're putting it on the ballot itself, yes. Okay, okay, fair enough.
And, you know, it's interesting, because there's still such an uproar about what's going on in town, um, I have people saying it's never gonna pass, and I say, wow, there's a whole group of people that, um, just have a very bad taste in their mouths, and it could very well pass because of, of.
It's true.
Um, and when people ask me, I say, I honestly, I don't care either, either way, I will follow the whatever change, I, I don't have a preference.
Thank you.
But I think we should offer it, because there has been many residents asking for it, and the Board of Selectmen didn't unvote it, they, they still, they voted it, so
No, no, I think that's, that's good. Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, as a appreciate, you know, as just, you know, consideration, it's just easy for us to sponsor it.
True. Okay, thank you.
Just one, I'm not gonna be here, because I'm out, uh, I'm going to Ireland.
What?
Yes.
What is this? You're supposed to get the whole page.
Your family's from England, what are you going to Ireland for?
I'm an Irishman, so, unfortunately, uh, just on public bill, this is for you, right, on the, uh, the, uh, storage, there's no, an agricultural for, for, I, I take it that if you're an agriculturally zoned solar project now, and they come back and say, we wanna put a battery in there?
Yes, it's a stand, standalone, you know, large-scale kinds of energy storage systems.
That's.
These are these big giant, they're all giant batteries.
Yeah, that's primary use, primary use, so, secondary use would be, would be different, so, yeah, that's primary use, if you just wanted to build a storage facility.
Primary.
Yeah, because it's party. Right, exactly.
Okay.
So, one of those small fifty-foot.
Okay.
Like, he was talking about those small fifty-foot boxes would be fine.
Yeah, so the other one, especially Ireland.
Yes.
Yeah, that's for solar.
But this is like the size, like, almost the size of a solar field, but all batteries, this is something totally, um, and there won't be very many agricultural areas left once we, we do the by, you know, the zoning bylaws, there'll be, it'll mostly be.
Right, okay.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, all the As are gonna change to something probably, so, yeah, it'll be.
Yeah, probably, there's gonna be very little agricultural left.
Oh, what else?
Um, so, we'll, we'll, obviously, we'll have our public hearing, so, again, everybody read up on their, on the, the, the zoning amendments.
Are you gonna be at that meeting, Bill?
Do you think he'll be back for that meeting?
Yes, yes.
Yeah. Um, so, let's do the public records request, and so, um, Jean can, can enlighten us all about that, you know, what's going back and forth with that, with that request, and going back to the
Okay.
public record police and stuff.
I was just totally blown away by that last request and this chart and everything, and trying to figure everything out, so, I ended up, I called the AG's office.
Mm-hmm.
Throw the dart, I didn't know where to start, that wasn't the right office, so, after three people there, then they said to call the Secretary of State, I called the Secretary of State, and after two people there, lo and behold, I actually talked to the person who was sitting at the other end, but the same chart in front of her.
Oh, so you got the one that has our case?
Yes, nice, she's.
By random, too.
Yeah, just by random, and she says, oh, is that number, blah, 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 and I says, I don't have a clue, she says, Benjamin, I said, that bingo, that's it, so, yes, um, That's wonderful. And she informed me that if an email comes in here, and Jane distributes it to all of us, we do not have to include that email to anybody.
Okay.
As long as Jane has turned in that email, we do not have to do it.
Yeah, okay, okay, so they don't need duplicate copies, yeah.
We don't, she is not looking for it, we do not have to do it, so, that will explains a lot why there's not a lot of emails from.
Exactly.
Because some people, but like, um, some people only have, the majority of the emails we have are from building, so that's why they, they were what I.
Jane, in the text.
Okay.
That's why they didn't. That's why they live in it.
But ones that come in from, from citizens, and that was what confused me, I thought it was just mail that I sent out that I needed to reply with, so, so if mail comes in from a citizen,
Yeah, me too, that's why I didn't do it.
No, it's mail coming in cheap.
So if, if a citizen sends.
Even though we don't respond to it, it still needs to be, that's, that's, 'cause I usually, and I'm sorry, people, I usually don't respond to those, I I take it as information, I do listen to them, I read them, I, and I think, but I try to
I just.
Right.
stay, not respond for open meeting reasons, and to get in discussions, 'cause that could be a problem.
Not responding, right.
Exactly.
Or, or have a discussion in here, somebody emails, like, like the mayor wanna be in, I, I, you know, you get a, you get an email or someone catches you while you're walking, you know, and so we come in here and discuss.
That's correct.
Yep.
Yes, yes.
If if those need to be turned over too, then then, if 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 that needs to be turned over, then then I I can.
You'll be look.
Right.
I have them, I printed a hundred sheets of paper out the other day, so.
So I guess electronically, we just, so the, the thing with electronics.
Yeah. Well, that was just everything I had, I just printed out.
What's the thing about electronics, we can scan them in, so we just can't charge them, so having a policy to print is one thing, but then you just gotta scan them in and send it PDF.
Yeah.
Um, again, I think that we got criticized for having that policy, I believe that it's a little extra work, but I do believe we don't, um, sometimes a resident sends an email and it's a nasty email, and it talks about neighbors and says some nasty things.
You wanna be able to track that and.
I just don't think that hurting people's feelings, because they called somebody, you know, a swear, I think that.
Right. That doesn't need to be disseminated, that doesn't have anything.
That kind of stuff, so I think that's a good policy, I know it was criticized, let's see what, when we get our, we, our letter back, to see what they mean, do we really need to send them the original email?
Mm-hmm.
Because normally you'd save it to PDF anyways, so.
Exactly.
Is there a point to all this, or is it just?
It's.
No, we have to.
It's just that we don't have to send copies.
I mean, is there a point to her inquiry?
Look, it's it's.
I mean, they're trying.
Everybody has a right to request, request a document.
Yeah, they have a right, and, 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 you know, I'm sure this hurt feelings, because of the stuff that's happened with the property, and, um, so we just have to comply, I just, I, we're busy, we, we all have,
Full-time jobs.
um, we all have full-time jobs, and Jean has a full-time volunteer basis, like she, like, is a full-time helping the world, um, person right now, so.
So it's, yeah.
So if we're gonna spend hours away from our, hours away from our kids saying, you know, go play while I spend three hours going through my emails, sometimes it's unreasonable to make those requests when, when ninety-five percent of them are from, are already being applied, so that was awesome that.
Yep. My assumption was if it came from, from Bill or or Jane, I didn't do it, if it came and they were on it, I didn't, didn't do that.
Exactly.
Right, because. And we would never correspond, because we all know that it would be, you know, it would, we, we, it would be an old meeting law violation, so we, we, we're, we're very careful, um, and if it ever, if something ever come, came in,
Exactly.
Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, I know.
Yep.
it, it'd be blind copied out anyways, so we're, we're safe, so.
Yep. So.
So specifically from us laypeople, what emails is she looking to get, because I can go into the sent items folder and just print stuff off, but the only thing is.
We don't really know.
So you wanna, so.
More of anything that's in your inbox or outbox that says VGG.
Here's, he has, he wants, so you wanna do a search.
I think you said VGG, child, no, old, or old.
Old Worcester Road.
VGG, old, old orchard, um, VGG, yeah, VGG, Old Worcester.
Benjamins.
Yeah, Child and Orchard, um, and.
So just things in relation to this right issue.
And El Turner Road, yeah.
So, see, so the best way to do it is to do that subject line search, VGG, Old Worcester Road, um, and in that original request, it actually says the terms that she wants, so, um.
Yep, that's what I did.
Okay. Elsens. Okay.
So I I did those searches, um, some of the mail came up on multiple, so, obviously Child and Orchards, VGG, and you're gonna get three copies of those, because I'm not gonna, I just took them out, I printed them all out, and, and there might be duplicates in mine, because they came up in more than one search.
So I, I mean, I like to do the final email, so it has the trail of three or four emails, and then I'm like, do I do the final, or do I send them all individually?
No, I do the final.
I, I think that you, there's, there's a level of crossing the line in fairness, and as long as we're, we're, you know, I have nothing to hide.
Now, because I recused early on, do I still need to submit?
But if, if, I guess if you have anything, and it, but it's, it's everybody, and.
Do I give these to you?
Yeah. Good job.
Four cents a piece, the total charges?
Um, so I guess if they really want it, I guess we can run it, 'cause we can, we can scan the whole staff, right, and have one, okay, perfect, awesome, perfect.
Just scan it in, yeah. It's a high speed.
Yeah.
Scan it, yeah.
Uh, so that's really good.
So that's what I did, I just did a, a subject search and printed everything and sent it right to the printer right away.
When is this due?
Found out I could select them all in my Outlook and say, print it, and print it on the.
I'm gonna just send it off, it won't respond.
So now, now every piece of my email goes to the town email.
Yeah, I do, I do that too, if I get something that's not on my journal code, I forward it to my town.
So. Sometimes, sometimes your email gets shut off for a few hours and put that on, but, um.
I've never logged in.
I haven't seen that one.
Maybe it's me, um, it's just locked, um.
Waiting for you. So, yeah, that's, that's what I, I tried to just.
I get the average.
So, so from that one, because I, you, you know, your personal email, you're deleting, you're, you know, 'cause you're cleaning up, you can't have a thousand emails on there, so.
And if it does go to my private, I usually send a nice note saying, please use my town email.
And I forward it to my town.
And I forward it to the town.
Yeah, every single time, that's the best.
That's the easiest way, 'cause then I could just pull everything off of that one server and I know that I have everything, so it's probably the best way to do it.
Yeah.
Yep, exactly. And if anything does happen, it's all backed up on the server and someone else can search it, so.
'Cause I know my phone only keeps two, two weeks, um, and the server charter only keeps thirty days, so I had trouble going back and finding some of them.
But, so, so, I mean, so now we know, wha- whatever was the situation, now we all have our town emails that we can use, if you wanna use personal, um, that's your, and then, and then it's just much easier.
Wouldn't advise it.
Just easier that way, um, so, I'm just getting late, one more point, um. The, okay, so, Jean and I met with a, a potential new planner, we had coffee with him, um, for two and a half hours, like.
Okay.
Okay, um, so.
You all have had things application.
Mm-hmm.
Interviewed, like, um, crazy.
This, this is the, 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 the resume that we got, is the one that you spoke with, okay?
Yes. Yes.
Okay, I wasn't sure if this is an additional.
Very, very. Very experienced, um, has been a planner his whole life, um, worked in three towns.
Okay.
He seemed very, very knowledgeable.
Mm-hmm. Um.
It's just not on paper, he is knowledgeable when he speaks, we don't, he's.
Yeah, you, it, it was, it was, um, different than what we had before, you could tell, he can really talk shop, he could walk us through plans, um, good, so.
Mm.
Yeah.
Bring him in for an interview.
Um, the, the deal is that he hasn't disclosed at all that he's leaving, and it's, it's, it's really dis- disheartening, and I have to say.
This is the one from Virginia?
Yeah, exactly, and then, well, um, so. How do, um, also, and his town has the same meetings, meeting night that we have, um, so how do we feel, um, how much, how much do you guys trust us? How do you feel if, if he meets all of our qualifications, if we get on the list and all the qualifications are met, personality is fabulous, if we.
I think that's subjective.
Right, you're right.
Can we do an interview via Skype?
Well, we can do it another night other than Wednesday, okay, yeah.
The, the, right, but, our issue is, the issue is that it needs to be an open meeting, right, 'cause that's what we need to do, and we, we don't really wanna, unless we're pretty sure,
Right, yes.
I mean, I'm available other than.
Yeah, I do.
Mm-hmm.
we don't want him to come out and be on video and have his town find out and have him get in trouble and have the issue.
Doesn't need to be on video.
I was just gonna say that, it can be open meeting, but not taped, so we could do it.
We can publish meeting minutes for it.
Of course.
Doesn't need to, we can, Drew will take a night off, he'll surely be more than happy to take a night off. I'm not getting in trouble, I have to be here, I have to be here, sorry. But if I, if it's, it's, I mean, if it was for a special interview, you wouldn't, yeah. I don't know, I really don't know. They tell you when you have to be here?
Yes.
There are times when I get a call saying, you better make sure you get to that meeting. Okay.
Who, now, if we called the Ethics Commission and asked them, or, and maybe it's the Attorney General's office, and just asked them what the rules are concerning that.
That would fall on an open meeting.
It do have to be, it has to be a public process when you interview somebody for the final interview.
Right, for the final interview.
But it doesn't need to be on video, is what I'm saying.
It does not, no.
It does not need to be on, on video, so the meeting can be open, we don't need video, and we can take notes, you know, publish notes.
Meeting has to be on video.
That's what I mean.
Correct. Well, you really just not let Drew in here, be like.
But I mean, exactly, Drew's saying, correct.
I don't think so, if he shows up, you have to, uh, tape, so.
If, if I'm sent, I have to be, I have to do it, sorry.
Right. Well, what, what would, what would.
Who's, who sends you? Robin says I have to do all the, all the views. So, I mean, we can discuss with Robin and say, Winston, we've got an interview for a candidate that has a job, does not want to interview, does not wanna in-inform.
Does want to disclose it right now, this is not the right time.
Yeah, yeah, which is, which is more than fair, which makes sense.
Right, of course it is, it's.
And I think, I think she would understand that and would not.
But you can't.
She seems like a very reasonable person, so.
You have to. Again, if I do, the person is.
Sure, but not on camera, not when we're broadcasting to.
At the meeting.
No, I think, I think it's public information.
Yeah.
Sure, sure, but then, we'll have an open meeting, but what I'm saying is we don't need a camera, there's nothing that says we have to record.
Yeah. Right.
But what Drew's saying is if he's being sent into our meeting with a camera, he has to tape it.
Sure, sure.
Yeah.
And we would need to post today.
Think you better be careful about that, and talk to Jessica about what's permissible.
Yeah, yeah.
The only thing is.
She won't be till next week, though.
Yeah, she's sick, she's sick.
Okay, okay.
Well, you, I mean, we don't need to do this right away anyways.
We don't.
Well, we do, but.
The other thing is if he's from somewhere not around here, unless someone's doing a Google search for his name daily, maybe they won't see it, I mean, I can.
But he's been, he's been where he was for a long time, and it would definitely hurt.
Okay.
I can understand, I would not want, you know, uh.
Oh, of course.
I've, I've interviewed at places where I knew a lot of people that knew where I had, where I was coming from, and it's, it's, word gets out pretty quick.
Yes, yes.
So, what if, what if we get another non-quorum?
The word does get out.
I think that's a better idea.
Interview, where, um.
It's not formal.
Um, I'm, I'm, I'm impressed, I was impressed, um, Jean, you?
Yeah, I was impressed.
How many members does it take to, would two, do three members hit quorum?
Yes.
Yeah.
So we'd be another two.
Okay, so it'd have to be another two, so it would be Patsy and.
Okay.
Well, I mean, I mean, I already met, so, I, I mean.
Yeah, I, I guess I would advise you to have a, a public meeting of the board, and that you're just, with two members.
I think, I, so, um, I actually had a very long discussion.
So even, even if there's just two members, still do a public meeting?
No, I would recommend you have a quorum of the board present.
Uh-huh. Okay.
Um, so, I think, I think at the point.
I, I think that's the right thing to do too, I'm just trying to be sensitive of, of his position, and I don't wanna put him in a compromising position.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah, that's, that's the nature of, of applying for jobs today, at least in the public sector.
Is it?
I think, I, I, I think that by the time we have him in, I think we need a public hearing, I mean, a public meeting, an open meeting, we do, but I think, and I'm, and I'm saying this open, I, but whether I'm, I'm
Yeah.
wrong or not, I believe that when we have him in for this, for a meeting, for the whole board, for the whole world to meet him, we better be damn sure that we want him, right?
You, you can't do that.
I just don't, I was just gonna say that, no, because.
You can't do that. There are no guarantees, we can't tell him, you have to come to this meeting, it's an open meeting, it's gonna be televised, but we're not sure we're gonna hire you, you cannot do that.
No.
Mm-hmm.
No, no, it's, it's still an interview.
Right.
It's an interview.
And he might say something that triggers something, and we're like, oh, no, we don't, definitely don't want him, or we can have the other case where we had the other gentleman who we wanted, everything went well, and at the final hour, at the final minutes, he said, no, thank you, so you just don't know what direction any of this stuff is gonna go.
Yeah, because, because the way we handle the interview process.
I can't speak to any of that, I just know that, I mean, anything can change.
I, 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 I know, I know what I, I know what I was told, because I was the one he called to tell, so, so I'm trying to be sensitive to, um, our, our needs and sensitive to the, you know, um, open meeting law violations.
Why don't you just have him come in at the end of the meeting, scheduling for eight-thirty, when, nine-thirty, when there's a full house here, of course, if he's concerned about his privacy, that'd be less than likely anyone in the public.
Should we put him behind a screen and disguise his? We could have him wearing that or something.
Oh, sorry, it wasn't overly concerned, I thought that, my original thought was that we would have him off, that we would just, we would meet and we have him off.
Just protect.
Yeah.
Right on, yeah, if anybody leaves, want to open.
Man, if an off night, if we.
We can't do it with blue, can we?
I would say an off night would be fine.
We need a black, black pen, black pen.
It'd have to be someone that wa- was really curious, so he's not come here, or off night to watch us interview.
You know, and honestly, if.
That's not what I was thinking.
It's, you know what it is, it's not even the people that come here, it's YouTube, it's rewatchers, it's the people that share, I mean, we say something that triggers something, and that meeting has been shared thirty times to Sunday, by the time I get home, I'll already comment.
No, we.
The piece, I'm sorry.
Oh. No, I was.
Yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
Social media has made it to almost, and I don't mean this in a negative, 'cause it's fabulous for transparency, but.
Do we wanna, do we, are we, are we, are we done?
Let's adjourn.
Let's adjourn.
Well, do we need to sign this before we adjourn?
Yeah, you gotta sign it.
Oh, before we adjourn?
We're all signing.
How many do we need?
I. My lawyer, one. Oh, you have to sign everything, my lawyer, you have to sign everything, and then date it, I can date tomorrow.
You sign everything. Oh, that's right.
Oh, that's nice, I have a big foot, I could, I could.
Make that a policy, that's it, everybody, all the same way.
I'm playing all over the place.
Pretty gavel.
Jim, it's.
I think your sheet should be.
Thud, ear thud is my amp.
Who's the engineer that drew these up?
Yo. Jason, Jason.
Jason, 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 we gotta talk to Jason.
He's in here all the time, he doesn't get a gold star for his forehead.
Jason, put the signature. Hmm, did you get the quote?
Those two are done.
Is it done?
I should probably have seen it after, I did it already.
We'll put up, do the next one, and I'll do that for you.
I think we can have, we can have a motion to adjourn now, I don't think we have to wait till we formally sign all these, right, I mean.
And make the motion to adjourn?
'Cause I could, second, all a favor?
All right.